Okay, let's call this meeting done. We've got a long, long day. Minister reports received by five.
Um, this clutch of these for a cover.
Liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events?
No, I'm not ready for this yet, Tim. I thought we were starting to begin. What kind of extension meeting tomorrow night? What kind of communities tomorrow morning? Got a notification.
Well, I think they can.
Is that one canceled because we had to pray breakfast?
I think that was canceled. I haven't gotten it.
I haven't either, so District Attorney Allen. Wardville Lions Club tomorrow night. Eastside Business Association tomorrow. I'll let you do the downtown living windows.
You gonna be in the break?
I think I have to wash my hair or something. I would love to. Alright, that's all I got. I don't have a lot on there.
Um, I have a Sleep America meeting. Uh, Wednesday at 11:30. Supposed to meet at the Chamber on Thursday morning.
Cap region partners, Christmas party at 9:45 tomorrow morning. Got the LU 150th anniversary meeting Thursday at 3:00. Salvation Army, go ring at 10:00 a.m. If anybody comes, come down to Central Bank and put money in. I'll take it. And then Living Windows is 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Friday night. Christmas parade is 4:30 on Saturday. That's all I got. Okay. Unfinished business. New business accounts payable.
We still don't have any this week, so.
Really?
Well, they're gonna wait for us.
Discussion of voting equipment bids.
Morning.
Morning.
Jennifer checked into the lease option like you asked. Do you want to tell them what you found?
Yeah, it's on the spreadsheet you had. Elkins did offer a lease option and Atkins, they said they did, but it had to be through a third party. In lieu of that, they offered a four-year no-interest financing. So that's what we came up with for that. Other than that, not much has changed. We did go back and send them each Atkins and Elkins example ballot from November 2014. And they sent us pricing for the quantities that we ordered and for the ADA portion of that. Those numbers are reflected in certain of these posters. And I came up with the estimated grant total in green below that based on that. Again, that's our best guess, but obviously, you know, 23 elections are not going to be identical. So, but based on that one from November 2014, that's what we came up with. And then there's a couple other questions at the bottom that we got answers from both parties.
Do we have a recommendation?
I prefer that you use a helpless rider because it does one machine. That machine is a lot faster than Atkins' machine as far as feeding the ballots and stuff, so that's the one I would prefer.
So on Atkins', I mean, you've got a hundred some thousand dollars left. What are the disadvantages of Atkins?
Atkins, of course, you go back to two machines again. You have an ADA machine and then you have the regular optical scanner. Elkins is all in one unit, so we haul one unit to the license versus hauling two. We only have program one. We only have the test one. So, and the machine's a lot faster. It takes about three seconds to run down through that. Atkins, it takes about seven seconds to run through the Atkins. So we have 25 different ballots now. We're testing 30 ballots. We have the guys over there testing, you know, it goes a lot faster. We can get it done, testing it done a lot faster. Oh yeah, it separates the write-in ballots. If someone has a write-in ballot, the Atkins or the Elkins machine will separate that ballot. Atkins' machine doesn't do that, so if we have to dig out our write-outs, we have to go through all the ballots and try to find them. And Elkins ones is in a different department. That makes it nice for us to try to track those.
What number are we looking at here? Are we looking at the estimated total election cost then?
Year one total would be 8,000. That's what it would be. Yeah.
And they include the new and used equipment. So the green, the green, I forget which is which. The one-year totals in the gray. 10-year total without election costs in black. And then the green print is the grand total based on estimated election costs.
Costs of ballots basically in program, correct?
With everything else, yes.
It's pretty hard to determine because you never know how much of a ballot, how much ballot you have. So it's very hard to get a price on it.
Yeah, they both, like I said, gave pricing for the November 2014 ballot at the quantity that we ordered with the ADA.
It's kind of handy for us to have the Elkins salesman right here in Jefferson City. We had three machines fixed. I dropped them off when I went to the conference in Branson. He brought them back the other day. So we didn't have to go pick them up or anything. You have to ship them, just run them right to our go over.
Where's the Atkins from? I mean, is he?
They're from Clinton.
Yeah, well, Elkins is from Springfield, but you said they have a local rep. So does Clinton have a, or does Atkins have a local rep?
I don't know. In their bid, they said they had a person locally that could fix the machines. So I don't know. I don't know anybody who's here locally from Atkins.
So the two numbers we're looking at is the 861 for Elkins and 702 for Atkins for 836 compared to the 691.
I think there's nothing you want to do with the used.
Well, that's what I mean.
Steve, are you on board with the used or new ones?
Yeah, I was on board with used. It's like, all the equipment costs is 80,705 for Elkins. And Atkins is 79,530, so there's a thousand dollar difference between equipment costs. Otherwise, I think the warranty costs are about the same.
There's a big disparity between the grand total estimate for years.
That's printing the ballots is what we've tried to get an estimate on that, which is hard to do.
I mean, those are real numbers. We just can't say that they're necessarily representative of all 23 elections that will occur over the next.
You took actual numbers though from 2014 and then you took their previous costs or their cost times those numbers, so they're apples to apples though.
Elkins, the invoice we had, were told that with their new equipment, it'll be less expensive. And so the price on there represents the cost with the new equipment. So it should be apples to apples. It wasn't based on previous invoices with old equipment.
Was the ballot that exists for November a standard, you know, average-sized ballot or was it a larger ballot because it was November?
Right, that was the, that's from what I can remember, that's the largest ballot we've ever had because it was big and it was two-sided. So in April, we may have a one-column or two-column ballot where in November, we had a three-column ballot that was two-sided. So that was probably the most expensive ballot to me that we've had. April, this year, we had two columns, one side, which would be cheaper than a three-column, two-sided.
And not all of that pretty cost would be, some of it would be reversed from the district based on who had it on the ballot. So not all of that 836,000 would be cost to the county.
Right.
It would be upfront, but if some of it was.
Correct.
So who's on the ballot? What election numbers?
But it'd be shared for both of them. Yeah, so I think the layout that you had pretty much shows that apples to apples. I think you did a good job putting it out there. I'm just, I'm having trouble swallowing a hundred thousand, a hundred and some thousand dollars difference over the 10 years. I can really see why you'd want to go with Elkins though. With the one machine, a local rep. Just convenience and ease of testing.
Yeah, the year one total is pretty much the same.
If I say this math, I was, as far as our, our office knows, which is one issue.
So where's the extra hundred and some thousand coming from, I guess? I'm trying to figure out because I'm looking at the election costs. And there's about $6,000 a year, a year for the ballots. And if we do that, spread that out over 10 years, that's, you know, 6,000 a year doesn't sound bad. 60,000, might be able to swallow that, but I would net the 861 for the new equipment versus 702 for the new equipment from Atkins, the green numbers.
Yeah, 6,000 difference for the ballots.
Yeah.
6,000 per year.
Oh, which is 6,000 per election and there's 23 elections though? Is that worth it?
Yeah, it's like, this year we'll have four. Next year we'll have four, this year we'll only have one election, so we have to provide that.
Tell them we're just doing one from now on. I guess I did. So I couldn't get the math to add up there.
Actually, we're about 140 each.
Yeah. So this year, we're looking at probably about $24,000 difference is what it would be since we have four elections. Is it going to save you that much money from having to test the machines, having to haul two machines around, having the chance of two machines going down instead of one? Do you think that's the way to go?
Question, I don't know.
Have you, who else has Elkins? Who else has Atkins? Have you talked to them? Have they, anybody's had any?
Oh, I, we talked to Coway County about their machines. I don't think we talked about pretty.
Who's Coway County?
They just went to Elkins.
They had Elkins machines and they've now purchased the new machines from Elkins.
The new machines?
Yeah.
So now we got this little footnote too that says election costs include shipping from Atkins. Uh, Elkins, uh, election costs do not include shipping.
Yeah, that's just the way they did it. Based on what I've seen, that should be only like 5,000 to 7,000 dollars over the entire 10 years. So it's not a ton of money, but it's, that's.
Well, there's no way to, I mean, without competition, you can't keep, you know, the prices of your ballots down. So if you kind of capture two of the machines now, so nothing to stop Atkins from raising their.
A stop what?
To stop raising it. Like they could raise it one and a half percent for the next five years or Elkins could just maintain the same. I mean, they've kind of been consistent on their prices throughout. So there's nothing to stop either one, I guess, from raising.
Just wait till you get the machines there and then they raise the prices.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they could bid it lower and then all of a sudden, you know, the next four or five years, we could have increases.
Well, their cap's at 1.5, so they agree to that.
It is cap.
Yeah.
So I have to ask.
It's fixed for five.
Your poll workers, I mean, I know you have great poll workers, but you know, it, some often have a hard time as it is just with what we've got. Are they both going to be about equally as difficult for them to operate or that?
Easily.
No, I mean, it's, you know, we always go early. We're there at 6:15 or whatever. And so we're usually the first and they're still getting, they're still getting all the bugs worked out and trying to figure out what they're doing.
I think it's your generation that has problems with electronics.
Yeah, but the, your, your, your poll workers are even older than I am. And they do a good job and I want to, I want to make it. You want to make it easy? Or I'll tell you what, we're going to go Irish coffee.
So, you know, it's just my opinion with the one machine. It just seems to be less complicated to have one machine out there versus have to train them on to it and have to set up to you.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all.
Yes, that's.
Steve, I, I mean, I agree that Elkins looks more appealing, but with just a single machine, a local rep, I mean, those are two big pluses. I'm just, I'm having trouble swallowing the total cost over, you know, after 10 years.
That's just the way.
Yeah. That's why we make the big money, I need to make this.
Yeah, we keep the costs down here often, so maybe raise this employees for the next 10 years. We can, we can make it work.
Where, where would this money come from? Capital.
Basically, the capital of Trump is the 80,000 to purchase, you know, would be.
Capital sales tax.
Yeah, he does actually grant.
Right, but I mean, 80,000 kind of capital.
And the ongoing cost thing comes out of general revenue every year.
Maybe in his budget.
Figuring into the election cost.
Right.
It's one of those split between the, this ballot and stuff, so it doesn't justify the cost.
So you're recommending used, Elkins?
That's what I like to go with, you see, just.
They supply a laptop with the operating management itself. Their product has to be replaced every three years.
Well, like, it's the one that sits in the back here that we use when the ballots and stuff come in. Tagged it all, since I don't want to talk about.
Yeah, but when we have been announced, then there's since.
Some just drop the dip one dime.
Yeah.
I mean, Elkins is going to be the best, the lowest event. They're not the lowest, but no means. Couple years to justify it being the best.
We have Elkins machines now?
Yes.
Why did Atkins give us a trade and Elkins didn't?
Just to be able to get their prices down, I'd say. Now, Elkins did say they would take our equipment back. They wouldn't give us anything for it. It's not worth it anymore. But because of the sellout, they would dispose of it properly. It has to be disposed of properly because we brought the grant money. So they give us a certificate of recyclability or something. I don't know that the bills or the ballot printing has been scrutinized in the past. Like it has been here recently, so it's something I ought to watch. As we go forward, because I don't know that. It's a, they compare it to print this, but we kind of have a formula now to go by, so we have to keep that in check.
That's why government sucks because we can't just call them and tell them, look, you get the printing fees down, we can make this work.
Correct, there's no competition.
So, no, we can call them, say, give us a 10-year price on, on these printing fees and we can make this work, but right now, it's.
We asked Elkins to do that and they would not do that. So, it'll save you time.
Might save me time too. Might just go with Atkins and if they don't want to work with us on it. We've had them for this many years and if they won't even work with us on it, it's kind of ridiculous.
Works that. Kind of almost working it after a bid though, too.
That's what I mean, we changed it, I don't think.
Yeah. I mean, they, they bid it accordingly and we got to determine what we bid results are. We can think on it if you want, or I'm sure Steve's going to answer, but.
Can I see if you can get something going?
What else we got?
Who uses Atkins around here or have you checked with anybody who's?
There are a lot of people. I think the state's probably split half, about one part uses Atkins and the other part uses Elkins. They're both good companies. Those states kind of change. People change.
Well, if we look at the year one total, I can justify that one. It's just looking at the 10-year number and that's one that's throwing me with a hundred thousand dollars difference, 160,000 dollars difference. And that one's kind of hard to swallow. I don't know, it's probably going to save quite a bit of time. How much storage room does that, or do those extra machines take too, Steve?
There is, we'd have to have the same amount of storage. It'd be, you know, 28 machines, but they're not any smaller than what's in our ADA machines. Now, we can stack up off to the side so they don't have a lot of space.
How big are Atkins though?
Atkins, actually, the case actually stacks on there. It's like the ballot box stacks and stack up.
Okay. So it's not having a whole other machine?
Atkins does have a store. Not with. Atkins, I think their box is stacked, so you can stack four or five of them and just take the computer units off of them. I don't know the, when the Atkins came in to demonstrate their equipment, their computer part was down in the ballot box underneath and it was real heavy. I noticed when they take it out of there, it's pretty heavy. Elkins is on top, but it does come off, but that's the way they bring it back to the better level, so. But that's another kind of a bad point is that the thing was so heavy that a lot of our poll workers, I don't know, they could lift that machine out of there to set the election up. We hauled the equipment there and then it's their job to set it all up, so.
So you bring it in and dump it to the dollar.
No, it's on wheels. It's in the ballot box and just roll it in. Our delivery people just roll it in and then they have to take the thing out and set it on top and get it all set up, plugged in.
Sounds kind of like Jeff too, that kind of such a big disparity just makes it.
I don't know, it's hard.
It's very hard. Need to keep going because we got, we got Chris. I think we got, we got Mike at 8:30, so.
It's like Jennifer said, um, it's the best guess on the election cost. You don't, you don't know. I mean, that number could be a whole lot smaller if we don't have that many elections in there too, so.
Can we, I don't, I don't, it wouldn't make sense to do that either. Let's try to figure out if we can award the, buy the machines and then go back and try to renegotiate the cost with them, but then if we can't negotiate the cost with them.
Well, you're stuck because at that point it's.
Yeah, then I know you said they won't negotiate it at all.
I want to be clear, uh, it's not a matter of negotiating the cost or their formula. They just won't put a cap on it.
Cap on what?
On their formula that they use. I mean, obviously, they have a formula to calculate their costs, you know, for the ballots we order. And so they won't put a cap, a 1.5% cap on, on the increase, correct?
So are we locked into a 10-year contract?
Essentially.
I guess, yeah. As long as we have their machines, we have to buy it. Because they were kept through a couple of years.
They're got to buy new machines. So that would, that wouldn't make sense either to say, you know, 160,000 to buy new machines from them for 280.
But the last, the last 10 years, it doesn't mean that they might change that on you, that we have to do something like 35 years from now.
You don't know.
Well, I have electronic or something, you know, so. Might stick your face in a booth and wink your eye for, go for Sam and flick your nose for the other one.
Electronics change over the years, it's hard to say what's going to happen in the future.
So, Jennifer, you said there's no cap on the election expense, meaning the ballots.
And the layout and, yeah, essentially the ballot.
With Elkins or with Atkins or with both?
Atkins has their stakes for five years and then for the next supposedly five years or the life of the equipment, they cap it at 1.5% per year. Elkins would not agree with that, but that's not to say that they would exceed that or wouldn't exceed that. They just were not willing to put the cap on it.
It just seems like Atkins is just so much more funny.
Yeah, they got 64,000 for its trade in on it. Elkins has given us none. That's a hard one to swallow, that too.
I'm thinking more for Atkins.
I'm almost leaning for Atkins, I'm just sorry, but it just doesn't seem like Elkins is.
Especially with the cap on print costs.
Yeah, I don't know if they think they've got the business already.
There's not much difference between Atkins and used.
I was looking at that too a while ago.
Yeah, you're almost, you're almost like Deverco with that.
I know Elkins was used for one election. I don't know about the Atkins. They said they're demonstrators, so they might have been around for.
They had to have been, what did we say? I thought it was three years for newer.
I would hope that.
I got 150, that's.
Do you see any more maintenance costs if you have double the machines? Like if they break down and fix them, then you see that cost being any more or quite the number of machines compared to the other?
Well, it's included in the warranty, so it would be.
It might cost more, but it wouldn't cost the county or anybody else. So the actual repair of the machines from there includes parts and labor.
Atkins includes parts and labor. Elkins only includes parts.
I'm sorry, Atkins includes parts and labor?
Okay, that's what I was looking at for year one through three. So we don't have to even pay the warranty for the first three years. And it covers parts and labor. So then year four, actually, year two would only cover parts only on Elkins. And their labor is only going to be probably $85 an hour plus they have to have a site charge of $550 to show up to fix the machine.
It was after 8:30.
Well, it's your pleasure.
So I'm going to make a motion. I move that we award the election equipment to Atkins for new equipment.
I'm going to second it.
Paul's favor?
Uh, for discussion.
Sorry, Mike, we're getting.
Being one of them? Okay. Because I was leaning towards Atkins too, but I didn't know if y'all were making another push for Elkins, if y'all really liked their machines or whatever, so.
Okay.
I just, we're going to try to work together and do what the best we can here, so.
You're in agreement with the new equipment? I mean.
Yeah, I think so. I think, I think it's still.
Yep.
Okay, Paul's favor? Thank you all very much. Okay. Thanks so much.
No, you're fine. That's a bunch of stuff we're talking coming up next. That's awesome.
Second final reading of Budget Adjustment Number 15.
Hey, this is for $4,148.97 of the law enforcement fund. This is the money from Sheriff's revolving fund that was once attached into the law enforcement fund for salaries for that.
CCW?
Yes.
Would you do an action on that?
Yes.
I move that we approve and sign Budget Adjustment Number 15. I move that we approve and sign budget adjustment number 15.
Paul in favor?
Alright.
Speaking of, will jail dig it that door fixed? I didn't see any more emails.
Okay. Contract for biomedical waste collection.
This should be a no-brainer like the last one. This is on a state contract, and it's going to be saving us about $11,000 a year to split from stair cycle to DMI.
That's all it says.
We're going to have most of.
Well, we only spend like 13 and something a year, so.
They're going to pick up at both health and EMS, or?
Health has been tagging it over.
Take over.
Oh, hi, hi. You want to take ours?
That seems to work good yet, so.
Move that we sign the contract for biomedical waste collection with DMI solution.
Paul in favor?
Alright.
Okay.
Fun. So now we're getting Mike sausage.
Is it time to make the sausage?
Eight thirty, Michael, TMS.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, sir. Y'all ready to make sausage yet? I held my sixteen. Did we have one of these?
Yeah.
My five exists, it's all intact.
You lost it already?
Yeah, maybe on purpose.
Okay, where are you at, Debbie?
I got it.
We're on the VSNA, right?
Yes, if you want to go on VSNA, it's in your book. It's on 101 six.
I'm in the book.
Alright.
No, I'll do it.
I'm going to get the VSNA here.
I don't change my life.
Did that shop with what, Trudy, like?
That got me going. I was about ready to do it again. I wish I could do that every morning. I was going to get myself to grab the wires again. And guys are like, what the hell was that? Messa cat had hit the floor. I did a jig, and.
Two twenty or one ten, yeah?
It was just one ten. Two twenty, I probably. And hair burnt off. We're going to general ledger?
Yes. You didn't update all of your programs last week?
Yes, I listened to you all. Why didn't you come do that?
I did, but you weren't in your office.
I did, most certainly. Oh, I had to go to general ledger and update there, too?
Everyone.
Everyone, first fifteen. I don't know if I told you that. You'll find out when you click on that, yeah.
No one told you where?
Well, I went in the accounts payable, because we had that on the agenda. I updated. I thought that updated. Why doesn't it update everything at one time? You can't call them and tell them to do that?
Page three in the book?
We're on page 116. Again, this is the enterprise fund, the EMS sales tax, on the, you see all the activity there for fourteen, for fifteen, the estimate for the end of the year for fifteen. What the department requested when the budget officer has, just to make things easy, we moved everything from the budget officer to the commission. And then, whatever you guys approve is what will be in that column when you adopt the budget.
I got some, just keep on rolling.
Okay, the first part is all revenue. Mike, do you have any, any questions or anything about revenue? Okay, so we'll just go into expenses.
The fees are the fees that we collect for transporting, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is a contract with Medsir, basically. Transfer in obviously comes from the sales tax, so. And then, carry forward is an estimate. I'm going with Christian Thon's carry forward for fees. It will be actual once we get there. The miscellaneous is just reimbursement from travel, or for training, or any other thing that comes through there. And of course, interest on that particular fund. Mike, we can go line by line, or you can just tell me what you're concerned with from what the budget officer has?
Yeah, as far as the line by line, I don't have any concerns or anything, other than when you want to talk about sausage and the capital part. But going through line by line, that's not necessary unless you guys absolutely want to.
You don't have any changes from the budget officer, maybe?
No, other than what we'll, you know, request as far as the capital slash that staffing side of it. There's really no big change that we're submitting from last year, when we increased portionally. Was there any change?
Why don't you go ahead on the staffing part, then?
We'll discuss the staffing part. You've got that in front of you. There are several bullet points here. I'll start with the first one. We have a 7A to 7P and a 7P to 7A shift, requesting to immediately merge that into the 24. That will also give a person yet to be named that we could use for the second part of it, requesting a second field supervisor. The two supervisors would work an opposing schedule, 12 hours a day. Going through the bullet points, replacing the current QRV with an additional QRV. That I would take over assignment of the current QRV, the replacement QRV will replace the one we have now. I can utilize it in overlapping QRV coverage with the supervisor that works in the field now. We have immediately changed the southwest unit to the run box of the city to enhance the area coverage going in. Southwest unit sits near Covington Gardens, over there by the Legion Field. We have also modified the run box of the Zito truck to help cover the city, specifically after 7P at night. Also asking to change the deployment of the jail ambulance from a Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 P, to a seven-day-a-week, 12-hour truck. And then, as well, utilizing part-time staff for a 4P to midnight shift on the weekends. Keep in mind, with redeploying the jail trucks in seven days a week, and utilizing a 4P to midnight shift on the weekends, that expands coverage which we lack on the weekends, and also will help reduce that zero in that timeframe. A lot of them occur on the weekends, and then in the evening on the weekends as well. Having that extra deployment from the jail from up here, seven days a week, greatly expands the coverage for this side of the highway, and also towards the east end of the city and the county. With all this being understood, the total impact of the budget would be realized. Of course, you'd have to bump up the part-time budget to meet that, or the part-time staff, and then two additional paramedics. One of those paramedics would be for the supervisor, and the other would be necessary to meet the deployment necessary for the jail truck.
So you're adding a supervisor and talking about more part-time?
Correct.
Correct, sir. Okay, make sure I follow that.
Yep.
How many supervisors do we have right now?
In the field, we have.
Three, right? Well, in the building, one, two of them.
That's correct. Correct. We have the intake portion of it, and there's two that work opposing schedules. They're not on at the same time. They work.
That's fine. Right now, we have three supes, and you want to add one?
Correct, sir.
And then we can make it a field supervisor, too?
Correct, sir.
Would one be supervisor and one be an assistant supervisor, or are they all going to be supervisors?
It would be supervisor A and B. They would have specific duties assigned to them. Of course, primarily would be QRV response and direct field supervision. But there's other duties that we all share within EMS from the supervisor administration group. But they would both be directly field supervisors in the field.
What's the bottom line difference on this? I'm looking in the book, I guess, here. So total appropriations, is that the number I want to look at? So 2015 projected and 2016 requested budget officer, those are two numbers?
Yeah.
Some $100 difference? Where's that coming from? Because I don't know, I've seen that, but I didn't intend it.
Well, I mean, we're currently at where the budget officer has us, at the 4.9. Yes, the department had requested 4.6, but probably in that was not, the salary you can see is about a million, or, I don't know.
The reward amount was only quarter of $33,000, like, each way.
All right, so most of that is, that's the number I was wanting to look at, actual expenditures, the difference?
So can contingency, one from 650 to 902?
Eight oh two.
If you compare 15 budget to 16 budget, there's not that much change. There's only about $40,000 difference. If you're comparing his request to the budget officer, that's where you're seeing the difference.
Well, I was just picking either one of those to use, because there's, you know, there's $300,000 between requested and budget officer. But I was looking at 2015 projected, and there's a huge jump there, but you said carry forward was.
There's no contingency here, carry forward is not a different one.
Gotcha.
We don't intend to spend that.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. That's where I was missing that.
And so we can move on to capital.
And the capital?
Or you have a computer box?
Capital then will be in 650.
Go to pass, sir?
Yes.
Actually, you can go up to low three, then.
Are you in there in August?
Or you can create or edit the budget?
Yes.
And then what, five?
We're going to go to 650 now. And in the book, year 114. And again, this is the sales tax, of course, now this is where the transfer comes over into the enterprise fund. But all the capital has been budgeted, spent on here since we started, so. So currently, looks like you're explaining on the ambulance for an.
I've got this slip of paper here. It may not coincide with your VSNA, but I'll follow it. Obviously, the two ambulances, two a year, we remount those at an approximate cost of $110,000. Finishing the Lucas deployment, the final phase for that. Phase two for the Paracots. Obviously, replacement of the QRV vehicle. And then also, there it is right there, portable battery replacement for all the EMS portals. And then, the MCI trailer radio portals. We have attached radios in the MCI trailer, and in the benefit disaster, we've got radios there to distribute. And that's the only thing, other than what we just talked about, staffing-wise, for capital.
The only thing that's changed, this was 506?
Yes.
And we're at 516, and so I guess up here in a replacement of.
The QRV.
The QRV.
And I did, and the budget already have $100,000 kind of contingency built into there, so if you look at my total, we're even at the name capital for 606.
Do you have that paper that she was looking at? Sam doesn't have that. I ain't, I'm not doing either.
Yeah, I'm lost.
It's attached.
Well, Debbie's up there with that thing. She'll be flying around, not fence-busking. She dims her out on that. That's why we have this stuff that's a lot easier. I'll leave that if I find it on here. I'll look at that, and then it won't make me. So what's it under? What account is this? What department? I don't have 650 on there.
660.
I don't have 660. I have 600, 611? I just know I'm in Co County, I'm as smart as I can be. I got everybody else. I went to 650.
You want, you want fund, not department?
I just have what it tells me.
Fund, select fund.
And then you're under the notes on capital improvement?
Yes.
Is that under the N, or is that under the paper question?
You can double-click on the account number either way, and it'll pull you to a screen, account number.
Okay, so these notes are going to be under 650?
Yes.
What if I look at 650 and?
You can add both of them, but you want to want you to both at the same time.
That's why I want to look at both.
There you go.
And this is kind of nice. They want to have it, and it spells it all out here, under the account numbers. Or you can look at the actual attachment. That's where that $100,000 issue is talking about.
That was just to give us, especially if, you know, if we come up with something very weird, we don't have to transfer it.
So capital improvements, click on that staple for that.
Click the N, the N.
You want to just do the account number for now.
I want to look at your sheet of paper that you had flashed up there.
Done there.
Okay, thank you.
How do I get to that, Debbie?
It's the attachment.
Okay, so double-click to bring up that.
Sales tax.
GL number here.
Yeah, okay. You click on that.
We'll figure this out. It's going to be awesome. Right now, it's going to be a pain. It's all on the computer.
Maybe by the end of the day, we'll figure out how to do this, Jeff.
Do that.
Maybe by the end of the day, we'll figure out how to do this.
Okay, so.
Get away from paper, that's my thing. Don't make the paper fair, boy.
Do you guys have any questions on Michael and the capital itself?
I'm just not getting to it, Debbie. Okay, so that's the remounts, what was that, okay? I can do that? What have we added to it that we just wasn't, or we weren't going to do? And what's new from what we've been doing? We've been upgrading the ambulances and remounts. Looks like phase two on CPR, stuff, cot structures, phase two.
It's about all the same category, so I don't see anything new. This capital here is all at your discretion. This whole fund is at your discretion. Once, once the budget's approved, Michael will then either get with Jennifer to biz these out, if he doesn't hear anything from us, or if you'd rather him wait, so you give him the go-ahead to go out to business things. It's definitely totally up to you on that one.
I think we'd rather wait to, to him and go ahead. Personally, I would, anyway. What's the?
Yeah, and after the budget's approved, we can still wait after that. Mike can still come back in at one at a time and give us advice.
What's wrong with the SUV or the QRV?
It, or what's wrong with?
Yeah, is there anything wrong with that? I mean, do we need to?
We're not, we're not getting rid of it. I'm just going to take over assignment of it. We're not, we're not getting rid of it, I'm just going to take over assignment of it, and the one that I'm requesting would go to the one that's operating now.
I'd like to say those used maybe a little bit more.
So what are we getting rid of?
We would either sell or trade in the 2010 Explorer.
Okay, what's wrong with it?
Other than age and it's just too small.
Nothing wrong with Sam, he's a little bit aged, we're going to keep him around.
Other, other than the size, other than the size of it, the necessary equipment to match what the current QRV, equipment wise, is just small. We have the capability, if necessary, to put a person in that QRV to haul them up a hill if it's snowy, or we can't get an ambulance to, in that smaller SUV that I have, that capability's not there, it's just too small.
And remember before when we did like a long range planning? We did include EMS capital, we did draw things out, depending on when the, you know, the vehicle needs to be replaced. And here's all those categories we just talked about, so following in line.
Right, there's times a QRV could probably respond, I mean, if you know what the call is, rather than sending a.
That's the idea is having.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Having two of the same that mirror each other, and if he or she is out on a call, I have the capability, I can go on.
Our new cot, what is the weight on it? I was, I was talking to Matt Schofield a while back, he was talking about the size of some of the people we're transporting. And then one of your EMT said something about that too.
They're not going to be the ones that are going to be out there working though.
Where, where some of our people were picking up, actually, our, the weight, where their weight exceeds the limits of our cots.
There are a couple in particular, yes.
So we have, but, so we do have?
We have a bariatric cot that is not a paracot.
Okay.
And we also have one of the reserve ambulances outfitted as a bariatric truck. Call it what you will, but it's a necessity that.
Uh, yeah, I, it just amazes me. Yeah, there, there are some. Yeah, we've got some people that are over seven hundred pounds.
That is correct.
Yeah, to transport and.
We have recently seven hundred and twenty-seven pounds, yes.
Other questions, Michael, about capital? I mean, obviously, you don't have to make a decision today just to listen to Mike's added request, or any concerns he has about the project, so.
I'm still on the QRV thing, what's, I mean, how often do we have calls? I know we had one out at OSHB where the ambulance could not get to out in the field, and the gentleman passed away, but, and I could see it being used in that, but how often does that happen? I mean, I think having one of those is probably enough, but I think having another QRV for the actual quick response, and maybe to get to a place before the ambulance does, or to help to eliminate some zero, status zero.
Correct, the, the statuses. A QRV would be assigned to myself, and in instances where the current QRV is deployed, I would be able to overlap that coverage and make that secondary response. In other words, we're just replacing my current vehicle, the director's vehicle, with a vehicle that can be equipped and matched with QRV, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, I'm just trying to figure out why we need two of them. Does it come up that much, or can we use a smaller one that's not necessarily equipped for? I know you've got guys running errands for other things to do, some maintenance and stuff around the office, and that seems like a regular QRV without all this other equipment, if it makes sense, is this something that can wait another year?
My recommendation to you is replace the smaller vehicle that is assigned to the director with a larger one that we can outfit to match the current QRV, that's my recommendation for 2016.
How many miles around here?
Ten years, this is one that won't fit.
No structure, it's too small.
Yeah, and I understand that, I'm just.
No, I'm recommending to you, we can do it for 2016. I think it'll best serve the county, it gives expanded coverage, it gives the opportunity for myself to get out here and be in the field and assist where needed.
Public works need a new SUV? And I say new, that one's pretty much new with forty thousand miles on it.
Oh wait, this guy, the one on the. We got, you got the escape, was it the escape?
Yeah, well, that's an option there. Rather than trade it in or way too little.
And then the director's vehicle would be.
I'm not saying I'll give it to you.
It's one of the, it may be used. To supplement all the coverage of the.
I'm trying to make a deal here.
Hey, you just picked an eleven thousand dollars by five minutes, out of the way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we might look at.
Good job.
We might look at.
We don't have to.
We might look at.
We, we can strip out what, we'll go to the other QRV, and we don't have to sell it or trade it in. I mean, if there's other places within the county that work, that's fine.
And Michael doesn't know.
What's the criteria of the SRV being dispatched?
Criteria is a known call that is going to require additional help. It could be a critical care transfer from a local ER, it could be a full arrest in the county, it could be a multitude of things, where necessarily a second ambulance is not necessary. And.
That's the only criteria?
No, there, it, it, as far as black and white, a brick wall that says what is it used on, there is not. As far as the QRV's design is to augment the daily operation of the EMS service. In times of disaster, whether if you have a car wreck and there are substantial folks injured, they've got on scene command, they've got safety oversight. It is a quick response to a call that necessarily does not need an ambulance. You can put them at standbys that necessarily need an ambulance. It's a multifaceted design, it's not just about a quick response.
Approximately how many times a day is it dispatched? I mean, I know you have some days, every day's different.
Right, every day is different, it's kind of like talking about the voting machines. We do approximately thirty to forty calls a day, approximately.
With the QRV?
No, a total. And of that, the QRV could respond to five, ten, fifteen, it could be, some days are busy, some days are not.
I truly don't have a problem with the QRV as long as we're using it, I mean, I think things should be running all day long. I don't think it should be sitting, I think they should be in it and going.
Correct, and that's why I'm recommending myself to have that overlap capability, to put myself out there and helping as necessary.
Okay, do you have anything else Chris?
I just got one other question that's not on the agenda, did you get my email yesterday regarding the?
Yeah, I figured we'd.
Okay. Just make sure you got it, I haven't heard anything, so I just want to make sure you got it, that's all.
Oh, have I replied it out? I'm sorry.
No, no way.
I didn't, I didn't. They got it on the agenda, it's kind of like, oh, what agenda, well.
I didn't hear anything, so I just want to make sure you got it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
You got it.
Okay.
And as far as, I don't know if you guys are ready to, salary wise, what was in there was a two percent merit and a two percent cola. And we're here today with each department head, do you want to specify to them that you want their evaluation by a certain date? So this is effective by a certain date, or would you rather not discuss the salary department at all yet?
Typically, in the past, we've always taken it out, I mean, you know, we can put it back in later if we so choose, but I'd, I'd like for them to have their evaluations done and a plan as to how they're going to implement.
I already submitted that.
Yeah, some departments have submitted a plan already, and I need to get to those.
But I mean, we just need.
But they have not done evaluations, so we need to make it clear that evaluations.
Yeah, that's all the math is, so we make it clear to them today.
Yeah, so I guess we'll have to tell everyone, evaluations and a plan for payers.
Yes, because there are some departments that did not submit.
I've got that.
And so, anyway, but.
Carry forward and get it.
I don't know. If they don't submit evaluations and a plan, then they don't get the money?
My turn, basically, yes, it wasn't put in their budget, but we didn't give them enough.
Is that, is that fair?
Because it's put the way in.
Everybody shaking hands, yes.
I think if you're giving each department a list of requirements to receive merit money, and they don't submit the requirements, yes, you can say that they don't get merit, that's to be fair. You're outlining upfront what's required to receive merit money. If you don't want to comply, then yes, you're being fair to everyone.
I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Okay, okay, we're four minutes over.
We haven't had a merit discussion.
I'm good to go, sir.
Okay, anything else?
You got my email now?
You know, we've had those discussions in the past, what's fair and just, and so I just.
You've got my other email, I'll wait for reply on that, and then as far as the evaluations, we'll start that ASAP.
As long as you're requiring the same information from all departments.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Sam, thank you.
Sorry, we're four minutes, you got?
Yeah, we'll get ahead here.
I know, we're going to, we're going to.
You'll have some, they're leaving out Sam.
I give me, I'm bringing my.
You better go find your little flask in your office, if you're stressing out already.
I just want to.
Just put it in that coffee cup, that'll be okay.
We might be bad.
Okay, Michael. Where are we at Debbie?
If you want to go back out, you know, where it says low data, and then you click on it, and then we're going to get in fund one hundred.
Okay.
But this time, we are going to have to.
Stop sixty-two. You don't have to get fund one hundred.
What page are we? What page are we on?
About what page?
Page seventy-seven.
Seventy, yeah, seventy-seven.
I went out to load that, I got the general fund and then.
Okay, go down to the next one that says department.
Mine doesn't say that.
My question, so I didn't even correct it, and then it happened to me.
Well, yeah, but I had one hundred over there. Grab some coffee while we're playing.
You don't have to do the fund, because the departments don't repeat. So you can take the funds out, you have to pick, you can take them out.
Like normal, we start with revenue on top, Michael gets revenue from few sources there, residential.
No changes.
So if you guys don't have any questions about the revenue, then we'll just go right into expenses. So, Michael.
Only one area that I have on expenses, and I did talk to the auditor, and that is. Five two two eight three on professional services. I requested one hundred nineteen thousand two forty, auditor recommended one fifteen, called her, and she agreed to go back to the body request that I had submitted, but she could make a change. And that's the only area that I have, and that's on page seventy-eight.
What was that again?
That's under the practical, practical services.
Okay.
Professional services. I was recommending one nineteen two forty, auditor said one fifteen, called her, and she agreed at the one nineteen two forty.
Okay.
And that's the only change I have. I agree with everything else that she was recommending.
So the change there is he has an attorney locally that is doing pro bono work for the county that will no longer be doing that?
Right.
So it's, it's kind of an estimate at this point as to what we think that increase will be for that one attorney who runs the pro bono work?
Can't get anybody to do the pro bono work, and no. Why do I do that? Free stuff?
And that's the only change that I have. If we were to go over to capital improvements.
So I'll just stop you there with those department right there, you can see that the total revenue is seven hundred and fourteen thousand, that's in there for the budget officer to pass. The total expenses for that one department is one point nine. So I just thought that this is a nice feature to this software. Now, if he's going to capital, again, the capital request, we told all the departments to put a list together of what they wanted, write Christian, and it's going to be in capital fifteen percent.
No, that part's not actually in the software. Included in our written budget is a list of all of those requests from the department. So he's actually talking about the list in the book on page one twenty.
They're going to tell me these things.
That page, Michael. Sorry, does anybody have any questions about the budgets other than that?
I don't think I do. Trying to keep up here with the new system, I'm trying to find it without.
On that, on those professional services, is that all attorney's fees?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I said there was some notes there that that was all attorney's fees or something, I mean, professional services or something, I mean, that could be a lot of different things, so.
We can actually add that, and we can actually put in the current rate that we pay them, forty dollars now.
Forty?
Forty, yes.
Which is, yeah.
That is pro bono. Okay, capital.
Capital. I know our maintenance had recommended four different areas. We're in the process now of getting our heating and cooling put in, and they're doing really, a really nice job. Hopefully, we will have everything completed by Christmas. That's, that's, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, by Christmas we'll have everything up and running. I see in here a recommendation for bathroom, remodeling bathrooms and painting. I would recommend that if, if the commission approves, at the end of the renovation of our heating and cooling, that we actually can put up a bid like to a circle to do deep cleaning, and I think that would take care of our issues with our bathrooms, we never.
Acid dusted bathrooms, right.
I think that would really. Take care of the issues that we have within our, right now, we have one, two, three, one, two, four, five, six, seven bathrooms. And I think that would really take care of our, that issue.
Okay, your bathrooms are bad, but Michael.
Yes, and I think that if we do a really deep cleaning like a circle would come in and do, I think that can take care of that issue. Also, we're in the C down here for a freezer. We just got notification about fifteen days ago that the USDA has a grant out there of about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for this area, and they will award bids, I mean, grants up to twenty-five thousand. And we would be one of those entities that can qualify because of our, our lunch and breakfast program that we have. And so I talked to the folks here, and in order to do that, we would have to submit a bid by the eighteenth, we would know by the eighteenth of January. And in doing so, we would bid for that freezer that you have down here for ninety-five hundred dollars. In order to put it out, to do the bid, we had to go out and get a bid to submit with the proposal. And in getting that, those bids, I've called two companies in order to put the grant out, instead of ninety-five hundred, it would cost between fifty-five and six thousand to replace the exact freezer that we have. And that is shipping, delivery, and takeaway. So it would, it's cheaper than what we have in here. So, and if we get that grant, that would be an area that we could actually take away from this here for the capital improvements. Also, the other area that I had recommended was asphalt, asphalting our rear parking lot. And we really don't know what that cost is, that's why we have no cost in there. That's why we have no cost in there, on that.
We're here with Larry and have him just, I mean, they've got a perfect bid, surely we can get a guesstimate on that.
Okay, I'll get a guesstimate, okay.
I would think he can get you something, I'd say we should be able to piggyback. When you say back parking lot?
That's one, that's adjacent to the Jase LePaul building. Brooklyn is concrete.
I thought we just did that.
No, you did a.
You just did the patch and seal?
He did a seal.
Okay.
Didn't we know they were gonna put those new stables on?
No.
Okay.
It's really nice.
It's nice.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
As far as they try to make this big board?
They put the sidewalks in in two days.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Yep, it's nice down there with the lights.
And also for the bus stop, they're gonna put a, put a shelter right there, too, that seems a way to have.
See if they'll asphalt that parking lot, of course.
So, the bathroom painting, we're gonna hold up on that, or?
I like that idea, I think.
I was just making the recommendation that we do, that we.
We're gonna try to clean it.
Those work, but if that in there for so long, I'm sure it, it really wouldn't hurt to bring in a professional and just let them clean the whole place, 'cause I'm sure you've got, you've got all kinds of.
The concentrating in those, in that area would really make an improvement, but that could be at, at the beginning of the new fiscal year, too.
I know Sam Radl wants, he wants to try to do some work for us, he's doing that now, too, so, yeah, we might put it up.
Okay, so the generator?
A generator is still, that is still an area that I always recommend it.
So you're wanting an actual generator, or you want just?
My thing is, we, my thing is, I know we have generators here, we just need the pigtails that if we needed it, it could be brought there.
I think we did that before, and it was thirty-some odd dollars.
Right, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking for a generator, 'cause we have it, we can, if it goes out, we can bring it, we just need the pigtails in order to have it available.
Well, we just, I mean, we just need a pigtail, but Spill's got all kinds of generators that he can pull up and power it up, but the problem was, is that it's like a four, six hundred, three phase or whatever, and the transfer switch was like ridiculously expensive, but.
Yeah.
But, I mean, at some point, I don't know, Public Works had some type of a pigtail put in, but it just wasn't there, the cost.
Same with the Shepherd building.
Yeah.
Had to rearrange some stuff, so we only had certain things drawn on it when we do come down to it, so.
Okay.
Michael, you have any other concerns or anything?
No, I had no other concerns, I just wanted to thank the commission this last year, where you allowed me to replace that engine on that silver dam, and it's really working well, even though we have less miles on it, it is doing its job.
And you should have a new employee starting to clean your place.
That's our understanding, on the seven.
Yeah, kinda, kinda, be gentle and kinda show them what you want.
We really worked through Greg on that.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah, this, this is a new person, there's gonna be a learning curve, so, and kinda show them what you'd like.
We can, we can do that.
Yeah. Be patient.
That metal door, what was that?
I don't know, I, I did not recommend that. That's through maintenance, I was not aware of that.
As far as the, they want evaluations?
Oh, I, I already told my staff, they have to have the evaluations completed by the fifteenth of December, we've already submitted a plan. So, we'll have ours up here a couple of days after the fifteenth, and probably you'll know.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Michael. We're ahead of schedule.
Okay, where are we going, Debbie?
Okay, we're gonna say that.
Yep. General?
Yeah, you can just go to department, you can play on that off your mind.
Okay.
So, how to load data?
And then you go to department, get rid of EMS, or get rid. And one forty-one.
Your cards.
There we go.
I don't need select a fund.
No, no.
Swear to. Just think, you'll probably have to repeat this next year. What is this?
Okay, what page are we on?
Christie.
I gave you some stuff I couldn't look into that system.
Scan it, send it to. All this paper, Sam's loving it.
I do.
I do.
So.
Christmas presents. It's a big Christmas, who's judging ugly Christmas for?
Retired.
The retirees are.
Do you have one?
I got one, some Dallas Cowboys on it, don't we get much uglier than that?
I know, I think.
Don't enjoy that, that was bad. Hey.
All right, one forty-one.
Got one too much Packers, lost it. You got the shiny object there, Debbie.
Okay, revenue accounts, so the revenue accounts, I want to let you know that four eight, five five four, zero zero three, the, the thirty Foundation for Health, Healthy Beginnings Grant, that ends in May of two thousand sixteen. Kristen and I have already discussed it, and the one staff person left, so we're reallocating that money to pay for counseling at JCSC, and then the part-time person knows that the position will be ended. And then the four eight five five four zero zero four is the MFA's grant, that was food safety, it's over, so that line can be deleted. Four eight seven eight four was that dental program that we were doing with the community health center, and they, you know, they just weren't getting a lot of clients to come into the health department, I think it's because the regular health center was just down the street, so they've moved to the schools and the nursing homes, and they're doing really good, so we're not gonna get that revenue anymore, so that line can be deleted. And the tobacco grant, it was four nine three one eight, was the, through the Department of Health, it was not a success, so that line can be deleted. And then general public health, the funding amount, you know, just keeps going down from the state, so that line was decreased to match what they are actually gonna give us, and they are, you know, July to June, so we had to address that a bit. The salaried, I was requesting a couple of new positions, I have that on the pages. I took out the confidential information, but it's still supposed confidential at the top, and I included that work chart that you guys asked when I came previously to talk about the environmental supervisor and how I'd like that to lay out. I also gave you the FDA manpower needs assessment, so it's the page after the work chart. So, with the manpower needs assessment, it's a really cool tool that you can use basically for any program, and you put in like the number of inspections, and how long they take, and the drive time, and it takes into account all the hours, that the number of the department is actually open, you know, how much people could be gone for vacation and sick days, and it estimates the total number of FTEs you need to do the job. So based on our data, which is the page after that, we need two point one full-time employees to do all of our environmental inspections, and because sixty-five percent of Chris's time is paid for by the FEP grant, and he is doing emergency, supposed to do emergency cleaning sixty-five percent, he's really point three five at FTE, so right now, we have one point three five at the FTE to do the work that two point one FTE should be doing. So, I am requesting that an environmental supervisor position be established. That position would also supervise the code enforcement staff and be able to fill in when that code enforcement person is gone, and I think that person would help out with some of the more technical issues we have, you know, as you know, when we have a technical sewer issue, the two field staff don't have a lead person to go to, or someone who's more experienced, they come to me and then, you know, we figure it out, but I think having another person that could go in the field and work with the more technical, more complicated sewage issues, or food establishment issues, would be helpful. We can't always get a person from the state to come out and help, we do pretty good, because we're right here in Cool County, but having that environmental person, a supervisor position would help a lot with that.
Do we, I know we had that in Russellville on that first, do we, do we inspect food establishments every year, or is it just kind of complaint?
Oh, no, oh, no, food, it depends on their, their priority, you know, they're characterized by what they serve, so the high priority, we do every six months, the medium priority every nine months, and the low priority, which is like convenience sources every twelve months. So, it's those more complicated, you know, especially like the mom and pops things, you know, the chain restaurants, they have like serve safe and certain requirements they have to do, but those mom and pop restaurants, we need to be out there at least every six months.
Is that the difference in the salaries and what you requested and what the budget officer gave you?
Yes, I believe. And then the second one is the next page after that little packet, you know, we had three part-time peer counselors, and one of them left, well, with one of the part-time positions, we'd like to make it full-time, and that extra increase would be covered by WIC Medicaid money that we get reimbursed from the state, there would be no increase to, to the county for that position, if we totally funded. And what we would like to do is have that person work part-time at the health department, and then go into the hospitals, and we have letters of support from St. Mary's Cap Region. You know, they have lactation consultants, but they don't always have those peer counselors that can go in and work with those moms that just gave birth, to work on breastfeeding, and right now, the ones that we have at the health department just work with WIC bikes, when they go into the hospitals, they can help everyone.
All right, we get the big one, Christie, now?
That's no cost to us.
That's no cost to us, that's just basically, yeah, and I put that in my, if we go back to my sheet, that talks about my comments, down the last one, the WIC Medicaid, five three seven six eight, we would decrease our expenditure line on what we could spend on other things, and put that into salaries to cover the difference, and it's about twelve thousand dollars difference from making that a part-time to a full-time, and of course, we take the money out of part-time and make it to full-time, so that's sort of for my part-time money will go down, my full-time money will go up.
All right, you're asking for two point one people. Didn't we eliminate a position and change some salary a year or two ago?
That happened in two thousand thirteen, right before I came, Marie, when Patrick, no, when Rachel Han left, she eliminated her position and gave those duties to, to other people. In my opinion, that should not have been done, because the duties that were given to the people.
I thought we did one with you where we, we did fill a position, but we were assigned some duties.
Yeah, with the, with the office manager, no, 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 with the office manager, Heather was still like our office manager, we did not fill the part-time, the, one of the front desk staff.
That's not even one I'm thinking of.
You're pricing about the one to do that.
If I've been before.
The environmental.
That was the environmental, that.
Remember that one, Marie?
Marie did that before I came.
Ah, the line goes first. Wait till you get my age, Sam, I was gonna start after you.
But the position I didn't fill was one of the front desk staff, that was in, it was in like the summer of two thousand thirteen, right before I started.
All right.
I guess I got lost, the environmental supervisors were, you're wanting to switch from part-time to make it a full-time position, which would be two, and then the other.
No, that's, yeah, for my environmental, that two point one is how many people we need to do the inspections, so I'm not asking for two environmental staff, I'm just asking for.
Do you want to take one part-time and make it a full-time?
In WIC, yes.
Can we give those inspections back to the state? Because it's their laws that we're enforcing, we don't get paid anything, go out and look at them.
The food, we could not get paid for that, we could give it back to them, but then we would not have state restaurants in our county, because they don't have enough stuff to do anymore, in my opinion. Sewerage, we do.
We need to keep respect.
Yeah, we need to keep.
We need to keep respect.
Because then our critical disease investigations would just go up, we don't get money, we get public full-time.
Do you see the WIC Medicaid money going up this year? I know part of the year we weren't filling.
Yeah, we, everything.
So will the person go from part-time to full-time to WIC, will we get reimbursed for the salaries and benefits and all that as well?
Well, we were able to fill Medicaid for some of the WIC services we do, and the money that we have coming in right now will cover that salary, it'll come out of that WIC expenditure line and just go into salaries instead. So I, we anticipate that not costing any county money, it can cover it.
So the WIC thirty-three thousand eight oh four, eight oh three go away, and it's that one?
It will go down, finally, about twelve thousand dollars.
Especially the other half of that person.
Yeah.
My class, I did that.
And again, there was quite a few revenue changes that were just eliminated, but I missed the fourth one, I don't know if I figured out.
I'll get my sheet, yeah. Another line that we need to talk about is the five nine eight oh two, the head injury, that Shallen contract, and at one time, that contract was self-sufficient, but because we are very lucky, we're thankful for that, that we get cost of living increases, that contract from the state hasn't increased. So, now, Kristen, you know, looked at the overall grant contract, took out salary and benefits, and put the remainder into mileage for Shallen, and that won't cover her mileage. So, our, we kind of talked about what we should do, if we should get the rest of her mileage out of mileage, or we just should have the county cover the rest of her salary and benefits and budget enough in her mileage line to cover her mileage. I also can see in my comments, I contacted the state and told them, you know, you're asking more of Shallen, she has, she used to have about forty-five people to case manage, now she has fifty-five, she has to travel more, this contract really needs to be increased. Of course, for this budget year, they don't have the money, and I also was talking to Shallen about maybe doing some more of her case management duties, like via Skype or over the phone, not traveling too much, so we're talking about ways that we can decrease her expenditures, but Shallen really, you know, she was like, I like working hard, I don't want you guys to give up the contract. She even said at one point, if it got really bad, she would be willing to forego the salary increase, just so you guys wouldn't drop that contract, because she wants to stay with Cool County.
So it's about three to four thousand dollars, something, that contract fell shorter than the original.
I'm talking about.
So that thirty-three is not enough?
Yeah, it would need to be about six thousand a year. Which, I have a request to replace that two thousand four to skate that we have, it has about ninety thousand miles, and done a lot of repairs, I guess, when you keep it running, we can help her drive it, although it's to the point where like when staff go to St. Louis, they take one of the other vehicles and we leave that one here in town, you know, for conferences and stuff, I don't want staff to get stranded. That was my biggest capital request, what maybe I'll. Yeah, we'll take the used one.
Yeah, if we get a new one for them, we can look at doing that rather than trading it, because we got nothing for trading.
No.
And I, I have a plan, I'll just leave here, my staff already, where I worked on evaluations, I also gave them the December fifteenth date, and then I have one piece of a plan, my plan for all research, so it's still under the, the now you gave me. And then I saw page one twenty that I guess maintenance put some request in for our building. We had also requested to have the downstairs painted, there's a lot of areas where the paint's really chipping off the walls, and that lobby, you know, it's a lot of wear and tear, so.
Page was on capital, I didn't.
One twenty?
You know, I mean, I agree, our windows need to be replaced, I haven't put my plastic on yet.
We're gonna put new roof on yours, too.
They always put plastic around my windows, just to try to help.
So here's the window, so the.
Can we trade?
How much do we keep this vaccine that had to be refrigerated?
It depends on the time of the year, but.
Do they all have to be refrigerated?
Yes.
I mean, is it like a refrigerator full, or?
The time, yeah, no, we have, we have three refrigerators, and depending on the time of year, they could all be full, it really just depends, you know, by that back-to-school rush, you know, they're all gonna be full, and the BFC, the vaccines for children, those that we get from the state have to be kept separate from the other ones, because those could only be used for certain kids, you can't use them on other kids and things like that, so we have two or three that.
Pretty expensive, or?
The refrigerator, or the vaccine?
The vaccines.
Yeah, but, you know, we're using, for BFC, we get it from the state, and then for our insurance, private pay ones, we're using VaxCare.
Right.
So, they upfront the cost, we don't buy them direct anymore, yeah, vaccines are very expensive.
I was just wondering why we really even needed a generator at all?
I was just wondering why we really even needed a generator at all?
I don't know when that was put in, but I suspect that part of it was the refrigerators. But you know, they're all onalar and we do have an agreement worked out, I think with St. Mary's Department. See that if our refrigerators would go down or something would go down, we can take them and put them in collision transported. But they do have to be kept in a very certain temperature range. Otherwise, they're no good. So. Do you have any other questions?
No. Turn actually that hand.
I know.
I know.
You want to max?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I said, I was just going to email you again. I had these things we signed from last week. Cause you were like, wow, we're having a crisis here. I'm like, oh.
Did we talk about working through law?
Um, yeah, I got a sub here.
Did you set up a meeting?
I did have.
Well, I didn't know if Sam had to go to store or anything.
Do you know the transfer switch?
Oh, here's the one.
And the generator and the.
I still have you streaming live. It's still streaming live for people watching. Is that okay? I didn't know you all were taking a break.
No, it was just a quick one.
Okay. I just was going to let you guys know.
The fact that when we get a break to leave their bridges open throughout this.
Hopefully somebody doesn't have all day to watch us.
I'm just supposed to go stack.
Maybe they have something better to do. Thank you. I would do.
You're in for all.
Well, no, I wanted you. I wanted Mike.
The more interesting.
Well, no, yeah, there's, in covering it for so long, I know. What are the areas that most of our health department, ambulance, sheriff's department? And of course, those are the main ones, you know? But if we build out there, we want to.
We can go to China and we're not going to. He declined two or three times.
He didn't want to come over and.
Well, the calendar is probably he declined.
Horse mark probably over there.
That would make a mess.
Looked at the little. You tell you burned it.
Is Melissa coming?
We're just going to fill in this box up here.
Under general.
Do you want me to pull over some people? Okay, then you just give them back. Okay.
I was listening to you. I declined because it clogs up my phone. I already accepted early on. I didn't realize you all were thinking I wasn't wanting to come.
Yeah, that's what I did. Well, we were going to wait for you.
Basically, I was.
Yeah, or you can come early too if you want.
When do you ask for us to come over?
10:15. Does that work?
Yep.
Wish we could set that up where we didn't get that notification every time we add something to it. That is a pain in the ass. Every time you add anything to it, we get another notification.
Yeah.
Well, then if we don't, then you guys, oh.
Oh, on the agenda?
No, because I don't look at it. I just hit accept every damn time. I got 60 emails because we add something to it.
Well, I look at it because I tried to look at my calendar and see that you guys didn't add something. Oh, you're going to surprise us? Well, yeah. Calendar's pretty old. Do that to you. Uh, what page are we on the bill here? Sam coming back? He quit.
Let's keep moving ahead. I like this.
I like this.
All right, Bill. Let's see, page 90.
Revenue wise. Revenue wise, I'm hoping to stay the same. I'm not going to front any problems with the city. The state, which is my annual SEMA grant that I just fit shit of everything, which been basically about everything. From SEMA, which is a 48 to 12. Last year, we received the $62,000 and the year before about the same. Not having the administrative assistant that we took away this past year when Debbie left and then Philip. We're going to have to give back the state almost $20,000. Trying to work out with them with my budget. As far as any adjustments they will do, but since it's salary, they will bunch. So we can't put that into another line item like office supplies, fuel or anything like that. So with her, her half her salary, half of her benefits, it's about $18,000 to $10,000. That will just have to go away.
Will that come out of that grant then?
Yes. But, you know, we don't put in for that grant again until about March. So it just depends if we're going to replace that person.
Are you doing okay with that, Debbie?
Tough. The admin stuff is very tough on me. The quarterly reports that I have to do and the admin side of that, it just takes a lot of time down, down my day. Especially, it's kind of hard for you all to know, but you know, we don't get, we put our budget in in February, March. We don't even get our money in August, September. So you're already two quarters behind. We have to keep all that paperwork up. And it caused a real problem with the city because their budget ends October 30. So if we don't get at least two quarters, then we don't get our money back from them. So nothing we can do about it. And it's the best stuff that's done this for three years. But to keep all those records and then turn right around and get your third quarter in when you just got your first and second quarter in. There's just about a month. There's just nothing to pay for. Keep it all that up. Of course, we changed the new computer system, which I'm having to learn all that too. And it's doing okay, but way before, we kept a copy of every invoice and Debbie didn't send me the, us the checks. So we always kept that in the files. So now that's when I pull that down, print it. You have to have an invoice, a check. If you've received anything, you have to have a packing slip. So a lot of admin stuff. Deb was just learning and getting involved in a lot of that. The biggest thing with the SEMA requirement is called the Emergency Management Performance Grant. She also has to take certain classes or this person would and attend certain meetings, not four meetings a year. It's mandatory. The federal government outlined that if you receive any money, but $5, that person has to go to everything. Hopefully, you know, we can get that back.
Could you deal with a part-time person?
Part-time and that's basically what she was for me, part-time. When we first started her, we did that part-time. We got half her salary. The last year, we included her whole salary. So the commission actually got half of everything back from salary benefits. So it's great help to me as far as that, but I know the job duty has kind of changed. But even part-time would be somewhat beneficial to keep up all the administrative stuff. And I've had her trained to do a lot of the stuff too, our CERT program, our community emergency response teams. She's in charge of that, the training and the meetings. And you know, just a lot of times you have like during the day, different talks and groups that you don't have time to get out to speak for. Anyway, that's, that's the income that we're looking at. It's minimized a lot as some of you wasn't here, I know Jeff was here years ago and we get, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. And the federal government really coming down big time, a lot of the federal grants. What we run through now is through our SOC, the money we get from the admin team comes directly to them, spent it right out of that. So we hopefully see that in line up. Other than that, in my budget request, everything looked real good. We need to really work on getting our money out of Camden County again. They agreed before to give us $5,000 a year if we're covering their area. We have not seen that, I don't think, this year definitely either. The bottom is the bottom income.
This year, the pipe on the income you didn't get.
It did come in. Okay, good. I did not know it. Last year, that was a blessing because we had a major repair on the NDMC, multiple communications. And that bill was almost $5,000. That $5,000 we got in, we used that to fix that truck. And that's a very, a very good deal. Otherwise, we would have been very, hurt real big on our maintenance on our vehicle. I'm good with everything that Kristen looked at. I would like to keep my 65, 53, 265 meeting travel dues at the $3,000 level. We've had that for several years with all the meetings and travel that we do. Tried not to expend that too bad, but sometimes things come up. That also includes any of the team members that have to travel for training. I take that out of that. I asked for an increase in my office supply. It seems like this past year with paper products and all this, I've moved in the office. But I'm okay with what she's requiring too. That's a little bit more than I had last year. I'd like for a little bit more. And the only other thing that I did in emergency fund, and I tried to write that up. I had requested $6,000. I think that's high. Kristen pumped that up to $2,000. That's good. The only I was looking on that is good siree maintenance. You know, these are three years now. Some of our batteries are starting to not get bad, but that's four batteries per unit and 18 units. If we have to do that, the last test, everything's still going good on it. I just hate to get into something where we don't spend a lot of money on the $8,000 battery. Had to replace a whole bunch of them at one time. So that's the only thing in that at all. The only other thing I just kind of mentioned, I know the other day we had our deal on the upcoming tax increase. Or the tax pass for public safety in Rose. I'd like the commission to really look at, maybe install another siree or two in the county that we looked at several years ago. Eugene was a big project and we did not fund that one. But I still feel a great need for it with that one as far as that area.
What is it called?
We originally did those for 30. With the increases, we're probably looking to $35,000. But that was the only area. We did not do the center town because that community did not want one. We really wanted to take that one and put Eugene, the school districts, the golf courts and all that surrounding area. And the high part of the county, I felt like that was what we really needed. We've had a lot of good reports off of siree systems every month, first Thursday of every month. I get a phone call, people have heard them. They like them. We've had to use them a couple of times. So I know there's a lot of distinction about having the outdoor siree and use of them. But I think they're a very worthwhile project. In fact, the state does a, they call the emergency managers' training for new emergency managers. So last year, I was asked to give the program on outdoor wiring. I'll be doing that again next week. It's kind of academic. So because of our new system, we're actively teaching that now every year for the state. I think the only other thing I really requested again is for last year, replacing those tables in our classroom. We're getting pretty bad. We've had one or two of them keep collapsing all the time, keep trying to fix them. You know, they've been there since 2009 and I'd like to see those replaced. And nothing very expensive at all, just something that's going to be durable, maybe last a little bit longer. Other than that, mine's good for there. No big issues. Anyone has any questions?
Think we can get some decent tables?
You know, I need to look at Sam today.
I mean, they're all plastic now and they're all.
That's what I'm looking at. And I think I requested $4,000. But you know, I was looking at it the other day. It loads something. And they have the new. The only reason I think we didn't go is because some of the plastics had a kind of rusted top. If you're sitting there writing, but now they come out with some newer smooth tops. Loads even carry, they're a whole lot cheaper. Eight foot's only $50. Six foot is $35.
Do they bow in the middle?
These didn't look like. They're pretty heavy, but yeah, who knows?
I was just curious. I mean, everything's so cheap anymore. You can't seem to buy anything that's decent.
Yeah, you know, we did okay on the chairs. I think our chairs doing good. But you know, they get a lot of use. We have a lot of night meetings out there. We use it during the day for a lot of meetings. A large region F meeting Thursday, we'll have about 37 people there. Health department, their state buyer report meets there every month. So it gets a lot of use. I mean, it's worked out great.
You can probably look at MBE, but I got a feeling some of these plates are going to be a hell of a lot cheaper than MBE.
They are. We did look at, we looked at that force then, yes. And you know, we kind of went the lower route when they first put them in. We changed and got a little bit better chairs. So you know, they got their own tables and everything. So if we can find that in Capitol Bruins or somewhere, it'd be great.
Give to you some Christmas presents or something.
Do what?
Bones on it.
Right. And you know, we've had the east side, west side business meetings there. So I hope they continue to do that. We do a lot of tours every year. Learn in retirement. They have a big tour every year. We had 19 people after a couple weeks. They enjoy coming out.
It's kind of our organization.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you.
I've seen Melissa.
I saw Melissa.
Mine's very short and sweet.
Is this one fast?
Uh, just, these are just for your information.
Can we look at all of them that we get?
We have to pass it to you.
Do that later on. Okay.
It's just they can't go in after their department's closed out and add additional stuff that has to be done by the next one. So at this point, they can't go in and add additional patches.
Mine hasn't changed at all. My Edsri software maintenance came in the same amount as last year. And the service contract's the same. Everything's the same, so pretty much.
Any items that the budget officer changed that you definitely need? I mean, it doesn't look like it's changed a whole lot.
No, the only thing that we're really doing is upgrading the GIs website, but Larry Vincent offered to pay for that upgrade. So that's not going to be a problem next year. Everything else is.
Good.
Maybe give an update on the county's website.
Um, well, they're in the process of moving everything from our current website to the new, so we're really kind of in a waiting game right now until they get that done, and I can't remember when my next step is, it seems like it's several weeks at least away, so we're kind of just waiting right now.
But all the departments have kind of given me their feedback, and they've given me their updates that they wanted to get done before they sort of plus started moving stuff, so everybody with the exception of courts got their stuff in on time, so.
Better than that.
But I think we can make some adjustments, I need to.
No, say it like it is.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No, thank you, Melissa.
You don't have any big capital expenditure that you need?
Nope.
Good.
You guys want to do the auditor while we're waiting?
Sure.
Mine's pretty easy, page twenty-seven.
No changes?
No change.
I would hope not.
I'm very happy with everything that the budget officer recommended.
Yeah.
Overall, there wasn't a lot of increase to our budget at all, mostly within the salary line for the two percent color and some merit. If you want to look real quickly, you will see some changes to most people's communications line from what they submitted. What we did was, we went in and actually created a spreadsheet and took like, was it six? Two at the beginning of the year, and two at the closer to the budget time, uh, phone bills, and broke them out between long distance and local, and took an average of what we were paying monthly, and times that by twelve to get everyone's average communications that they're currently paying, and adjusted those in there, and put them in separately so that you can see them. And we did that for every department, so you will see some adjustments to everyone's submission for communications. We went in and tried to figure out actually what we were paying.
The new contract we signed, there should be a list on everybody, but leave it like that, I'll figure it out.
And you did put in a two percent color and a two percent merit, is that correct?
Yes.
I was looking through the budget book the other night, and I was curious why our bonds, just every so many years.
Um, yes, we did note in there, so like my bond, I paid a four-year bond when I came into office, so in fourteen, I paid a four-year bond. I actually noted that in there, so you knew when the budget began. You will see a few bonds, like notary bonds, that are every two years, I think, so there are some reoccurring expenses in some departments that have multiple notaries, but most elected officials pay a four-year bond now.
Four-year bond?
Yes.
I do carry one every year.
Yeah, there are.
We carry some, you're right.
You just carried that four-year.
Four-year bond, okay.
So, yeah, there are some, I know Marilyn pays hers every year, I know the coroner has an annual one, I think you have an annual one. So, we tried to go in and note if we knew what they were, and tried to verify the ones that were four-year.
And did all, all those come at the same time, kind of? I mean, I guess every two years, I mean, they're staggered.
Right, so the one taking office, so yes, you're staggering every two years.
Do we have a lot of time for you?
I was gonna say, Steve wanted to go.
Yeah. Not cabinet, but.
I guess Bill, since Bill didn't have any employees, he doesn't really do any evaluations.
And Melissa, I can give you that list, I can give you the evaluation forms, and the dollar amount come up to you last year.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, there we go.
Good, you called.
Long time no see.
Yeah. What was the page?
Thirty-five.
Are you going to ask him about that overtime money?
I was just going to ask.
Okay.
That was the only concern that I had this year. I, of course, we don't know what we're going to get in the way of initiative petitions, so what happens if we go over?
Um, so, I kind of went back and looked at what we have paid out in overtime. I know you only have maybe two employees that actually take advantage of being there for overtime payout. I don't think we've ever paid more than three thousand in a given year, but, I mean, it is something that could be more than three thousand, depending on how their elections go, and how many initiative petitions I get.
That is the overtime in the parks, I guess, is that what it refers to?
Right, right.
So, we do have four elections, so the only two people that would go over on the overtime would be Marlin and Dawn, they would go over on their time maybe, the other three girls don't have enough time to go themselves. And that would be the only two areas that I noticed.
Don't have any contingency in the budget?
It's just all in general, it's within general fund.
So, we just have to transfer out of general?
Right, so, I mean, you could wait and see how the elections are going, if that's something that we need to do partially through the year. I mean, that one's a little different than most departments, because we don't really know what's going to happen.
That was my main question, is can it be adjusted if we go forward like this and adjust to one? You don't really know.
No, would you say, thank you? Those are great, thanks a lot.
And most of them, they do encourage them to comp it, that they can get to a point where they can't take it, so that's where over payout came into play, as far as overtime. And part-time, again, as needed.
Right, you just don't know what, you might get an initiative petition where you have to sit down and check signatures all day long. Of course, it'd be cheaper to hire someone part-time than it would be to have the girls work extra to do it at time and act, so, but we don't know what we're going to get, so. I'm fine with the way it is, as long as we can change it later on, if we actually get four or five petitions we have to check.
We can change it, we can always add to it, we just can't take from it. That's, that's why I struggle with putting anything in there a lot of times, because when you put it in there, no, okay, we're just going to take that out of overtime and transfer it to, you know, whatever, so, we can always add it.
Can we do that transfer?
Not, not, not payroll account.
Okay.
Liquor license, I like that liquor license.
Liquor license.
As far as elections go, she's been drilled in there, and she's actually got by the month of what the estimated cost will be on each one of those, kind of nice.
What we tried to do there was, we went back to the last presidential election year, and took the cost of the four elections that year, and then I think we added ten percent, so over the four-year, it must be the cost probably increased about ten percent, so that's how we came up with the estimates for those elections. And actually, the postal gambit postage, I think you've already incurred most of that cost this year, so some of that can come out.
About them?
Yeah, so most of that cost was incurred in twenty fifteen.
I don't think I need to do office chairs, where does that come from?
You got that one, that's my gift wrap for you.
I can't sell them on new voting.
That was pretty.
Yeah, but that one, but, but like, my summer keeps dropping.
So, those two options, you could request that, most of the departments, we've taken out their office equipment line, and it included those requests in sales tax.
So, it comes out of office supply, so I think there's enough money in this year that I can still get it.
So, that's up to you guys, if we consider a chair and office supply, so if he has the money in this year's budget to purchase it out of his office supply, we don't have a problem with that.
Is that okay?
Well, it doesn't exceed forty-five hundred bucks.
Right.
If it is, you get along with the vibrator, or stuff, or use it after.
And we can look at office supply if he has forty-five hundred dollars left in there.
Well, I show I've got about eleven hundred dollars in there again, so.
Hopefully, you don't need eleven hundred dollars.
No, I would think it's five, four hundred dollars.
If I'm he's looking, I would ask that me and Chelsea could, and mine does the same thing, I'll be sitting there goes.
Yeah, that's what's it?
I'm on the floor, and then I go back up, and then it's.
You're not real tall. I'm not sure I'm in the front of the.
But I can't have my feet behind.
We have an office supply category, Debbie.
Probably not as big as it is, but I've got office supply.
Well, I haven't looked over.
Appreciate it. And I'll look into it too, if you guys don't mind, just look into it.
I guess I.
Hundred-dollar chair?
Hundred dollars?
Do you want it on surface?
Yeah. You'll be replacing it any, if you've been a hundred dollars up here.
You know, since we bought the equipment, our service contract here.
You have my gun.
What are they costing?
We could be. You have equipment service contract, fourteen thousand seven fifty, well, that won't be in that screen for the first year.
Oh, so we can adjust that.
The presidential preference primary costs so much.
We charge the federal government for that.
So, why does it cost so much?
Oh, I don't know.
I think that's the bottom, you know, he's charging, he's going to charge the TV scene. I think we ought to charge now, election costs.
How many people go over?
Just going back.
I don't think it's how many people in the service, so we have, everybody's voting to some of the elections, you don't have people in Lawrenceville voting, they don't have anything in their ballot, or the House, or St. Martin, so this one, you got to hit every precinct and every district.
So, like a presidential election, you'll have, what, a sixty or seventy percent turnout, probably like double what it is. It's going to be a big year.
DRE, and I think your electoral register can be deleted.
Yeah, there won't be no service contract.
Can we change, leave those notes in there, note your pictures?
I just want everybody around, should they pick a candidate for party, so they're eleven. Debbie, the vote, twenty-five candidates.
Well, they used to do that, though, you had before, I think when Lincoln won, didn't you have, you had, you had, you had Breckenridge.
You were there.
There were.
Watson.
I think there was four candidates running, you had Breckenridge running, you had Lincoln.
I was going to actually change the notes, you have to click on the GL, you can see it from the other, but you have to be able not wanting to change it.
So, yes, he saved that some money, no postal gambit, and no election equipment maintenance the first year.
So, will your number be good then?
Four.
Well, you've got four forty-seven in here for election expense, which is what it's on.
So, that ten thousand, six hundred thousand there for the postal gambit can come out, so it will be.
Yeah, but what about, I mean, you knocked him down to three hundred and sixty-three thousand.
We actually talked through that, he was using the total cost that we were charging to the districts to come up with his numbers for election, but some of that cost for like employees and stuff comes out of the salary line, so I use the actual cost that we paid out of election expense in that year to come up with my figure, and that's how I came up with the savings. So, there are things that get charged to the district that come out of other lines in his budget, like his personnel, that he was including in that election expense that should not be. So, we did go over those numbers, and I think that Steve and I came to an agreement that ten percent on top of what we actually spent out of the election expense in the last presidential year.
So, answer to the question is three sixty-three is good?
Yes, minus the ten thousand for.
Minus ten to five to six, okay, so we're at three fifty-three. Either way. Cool.
We took out the equipment service contract.
It's your damage, it's two thousand.
Fourteen thousand seven fifty, because we won't need that, since we don't think that.
You still will have two in there, you have your road roof, for your election, or your road cards, and for a printer in the back, I think, so we still have, we'll have a little bit, the copier.
Oh, the copier we'll still have, okay. Now, the arrow we won't have.
Arrow will go away?
Yeah, that'll go away, because that'll be.
So, that's, you're down to five hundred.
Yeah, and the copiers, just if we go over our copy.
Well, you should have a annual maintenance, isn't it, that's a monthly copy.
Got all that, boss?
I don't like taking one from.
Can we even give you a chair? Man, I'll tell you.
You will need to go back to your, 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 and stuff.
Because he wants to do voting equipment, most of it needs quite a bit of that before the end of the year. There are a lot of accounts, even so far, some of the other ones that have grants, that we'll have to adjust at the end of the year to the actual carry forward though, so. I'll try to explain that, for that one. But I'll wait for Kristen on that, she's going to come along and bring it to us.
What else?
Anything else?
If we want to quickly look on the next page, page thirty-six, is his election service fund, on that one, we just budget everything that comes in on the expense side in one line, so you will see his election service fund gets fees from every election, plus his capture forward and interest, and then he gets that total amount on the expense side.
Let's just estimate, did you take out the equipment?
Um, I think that I have done that fairly well, but we will look at that again at the end of the year, make sure that that carries over the amount. And something else to see there in the new system, on that page line, we tried to go in and attach the actual statute for the election services fund, so that it's there too, if someone wants to see it, we tried to go through and add that to it.
You gotta make that bigger, I'll ask all four, that's. Chair, read that too.
You gotta put it up on your computer.
Still hard to.
I don't know, I was getting properties.
That's really nice.
Don't put it in my front of my face, though.
So, besides the notes, we have those actions too, that hopefully give you more information about what they can, can spend that money on.
Sixty-five percent of each election. This year, the figure for that fund.
Yes.
Or next year, the figure for that.
My other thing, Steve, is on the, we're asking everybody to do the employee, for their employee evaluation, to come up with a plan for the merit money, so that everybody presents something.
Sure, sure.
Anyway, so if we get those done, we approve of how you're going to do it, so. Great.
I think I submitted it in there.
You do have a plan, but you need to do your evaluation.
Do you want to file for fifteen?
Okay, I can have it by December fifteen.
Is that a form or something?
I can send you the forms if you want to use our forms. Are you going to design, look with your own, add two R's?
Yeah, you may send it yours, I have an idea what.
Sheriff's got some, and EMS has some that they use, they come up with some type of a point system, which is kind of better than maybe some of ours, but better, maybe worse, I don't know.
Yeah, it depends if you have a basic.
Yeah, but they got board.
It would be better.
Right.
Some departments might.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Neighborhood improvement, we have something about that.
Yeah, so currently, all we've budgeted in the neighborhood improvement is our current districts that are always been in that, that is a debt service fund, so once Parkview Meadow is completed, it will move into the neighborhood improvement fund as a debt service for the county. We do need to decide where we want to put the construction costs to save the Parkview Meadows during that construction period, it will not go into the NID fund, because it's not a debt service at that point. Right now, I'm leaning towards putting it in for a bridge portion of the capital improvement sales tax, it is capital improvement, that makes the most sense, it would be its own revenue and expenditure line in that budget, and they would track that project separately from everything else, so that's kind of where I'm leaning towards at the moment, if you guys have problems with that.
We have revenue coming in, and revenue going out as we.
Right. Right, so once we sign the paperwork with the bank, that whole amount will come in to there to spend, and then we'll spend it down out of an expense line and track those project costs as they go back out.
And then as we tax people on that, maybe next year, I guess.
So once those leads and things are actually signed, and we have a good debt service amount coming back in, cause they get that thirty day period to decide whether they wanna pay upfront or.
Right.
Then it will move into this NID fund as a debt service.
The neighborhood sinking fund, yes.
And we actually have that on agenda for the ninth. As far as you're gonna be signing the paperwork with, um, with the financing sheet company to authorize us to close, we will receive a wire transfer that day of the money. And we're gonna draw down, to be able to sign that engineering, and we're gonna definitely try to sign the other day. So we'll sign that that day, and we're gonna draw down monthly on that. We're not gonna give that whole loan at one time.
Okay, so.
We'll draw it as we need.
So those, those monies come, come in from that NID, whatever. It'll go to make the loan payment, and then the extra money, or does, does everything go to the bank, and then they pay the bond at some point?
So you'll be set up kind of like, it's kind of like a home loan, you know, we will have a set debt service schedule at that point of how much we pay every year. So you'll have those tax payments coming in from the collector at the end of the year, every year from those people making their tax payments. And it will go into that fund, paying those debt service payments for the bond.
So if all the payments come in, and do they make one lump sum payment a year?
Yes.
Okay, so they're just well payments.
Something else we did talk about is, we might want to put a reserve amount in that fund that's not currently there because of that contractor that owns, um, with the ten or twelve property. Ten percent of the property that is currently in bankruptcy, so we talked about putting a reserve amount in there. Once we're beyond that bankruptcy, we can take that reserve back out of that fund. So you need to decide where you wanna pull that reserve from to, um, if it comes out of the real fund, if it comes out of Roadbridge. Roadbridge would be a little harder to pull off, cause their money is restricted, uh, but.
Be a flat amount for the whole period, or?
I, I would, we should probably take, most of the time, it can only go on the tax rolls for three years, and then it would be sold anyway. So we need to figure out those properties, and how much their debt service would be for those three years, and put that amount into our reserve fund.
Clear as mud.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Who wants to say anything? Lucky you.
Turn yours off at just page thirty-six. And then Department one forty.
You can start it up. You can finish it without me too, if you want to.
I'll be where the paperwork is. Soon as he's in, I'll find him.
Morning. I got my voice back, so I'll talk just a little. Are we ready?
Yeah, we'll wait a minute for Jeff.
I have comments.
What time is it? Is it legal?
It's illegal.
They're hard, guy.
It's legal.
Play it in the courthouse, please.
I brought them on file, so, uh. I brought twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, so. All the lines here in order.
Um, so I did reduce the bond amount, because a portion of that bond comes out of the school fund. So that, that's the difference there, is a portion of your bonding comes out of the school fund.
Plus, we might find, when I do the S, that the, uh, the, you know, premium quote will come from, uh, from the issuer, uh, who knows to be less, because so much of the money is normally retained by the county collector. Things where you're intervention, I don't know. So I admitted I was wrong, but you can, I told him how much you wanted. He's very happy to hear you were right. So, uh, so, so it may come back quite a bit less, I don't know. It'll come back less, how much less, I'm not sure, since I'll handle a lot fewer dollars, so there's. Probably will be dollar for dollar less, I'm sure. Really, I think the, uh, the one line we need to, uh, to make sure is to work out all right for everybody, and that is, you know, last time I was here, last year, we were talking about my deputy treasurer's annual salary needing to be in line with the duties, which have changed over time. I think they've gotten a little more sophisticated, a little more complex through the years. And, uh, so last year, I had a conversation with, that's been particularly, Jeff, had asked me to put it off for one year. And that an increase should be split between two years, which we, we thought was very reasonable. And so I think we add it, uh, two thousand dollars for this year.
There's a two thousand dollar increase in their salary line.
Plus, plus the two in the due.
And then we would come back in next year and ask for the other two. And we think that kind of approximates a, you know, a fair market salary, given that Penny's gonna be retiring, uh, sometime, uh, in the next twenty years. And I'll need to make sure, and I think Debbie and Kristen and others who work in our office, we need to have somebody of the kind of caliber that Penny has brought to the office. And, uh, as a matter of fact, I'll let Penny remark about some of the things that have changed about her position, just since she came on.
And you're studying years, and there are a number of things that we do that we didn't do when we started. You know, we assumed part of the financial management was the ambulance, the EMS services, and there's quite a bit of kind of coordination, you know, between MedServ and central bank, and, uh, the people that work at the ambulance office. So, you know, that, that takes a bigly amount of time. Also, since we, um, now have the Co-County Health Insurance Fund, there's some financial management there. You know, making sure that those checks that are issued by a third party, you know, we clear those daily, and make sure that they're cleared timely. You know, making sure that the automated clearinghouse payments that we receive are appropriately received, so there's coordination there between the finance office and our office. There are some things that were never done, that should've been being done before we got here. For example, they never reviewed the outstanding checks, so we had all of these old, old checks, which we got reconciled and shipped off to the treasurer's office. So now I conduct a monthly review of the outstanding checks, and if there are checks out there that look like they should've been cashed, I follow up on those with people they've been issued to. So that, you know, that cuts down on that, um, unclaimed property situation. You know, we used to clear the checks in the finance office once a month, now we electronically clear them daily. So if someone from one of the other offices calls and says, can you check to see if this check's cleared? Not only can we check to see if cleared, we can provide them an DMH so they can show for payment. So, you know, that's, again, that's another electronic thing that, you know, we're, we're kinda stepped up our game. And, you know, I am sixty-seven, so at some point, I am gonna retire, and I think that it's important for whoever is the treasurer to be able to offer a competitive salary, so that they can get someone that has a pretty specific skill set. I have a accounting degree and I have a master's of health administration, so, you know, you need to be able to attract a good, nice deputy.
And I would add to that, you know, traditionally, county treasurers don't have county backgrounds, uh, and, uh, and they rely, you know, like many of us do in our office staff. I think I've become competent enough in my receiving skills, I receive everything that comes through our office all year long, except for the county collector, which is still a freaking nightmare. And Penny steps in and helps with that, or one of the two things on receiving. But beyond receiving, uh, there is a myriad of things that have to be done regularly and have to be understood from the inside out. And just as importantly, have to be done correctly. Penny does that exceedingly well, and her successor, uh, needs to do that exceedingly well. You do that by hiring, of course, my person, it's on you, you guys as commissioners here all the time. So I will say my leg still hurts, I'm walking across the hallway, I said, I thought you were sixty-five. She goes, no, I'm sixty-seven, and I said, you're a freaking time bomb. And of course, I got kicked in the leg. So, let's see, capital, uh, capital, capital improvements money, I would like to ask several things to, uh, included in here, but you all know we're kind of isolated in a, in a good and happy way over at the courthouse. Take up very little room over there, but the, you know, our kitchen space, our break room is in effect, the jury room over there, it's closed a good part of the time. Uh, we certainly have been, you know, we've been made to feel welcome by Donnell, her staff, and her predecessor. So we use a refrigerator a little, uh, and that's about it. And it'd be nice if you guys, um, who could see just perhaps purchasing a mini refrigerator. And in place of the nineteen fifties or nineteen sixties credenza I have in my office, to take that thing out and maybe put in a nice piece of furniture that we can put that refrigerator in, and then have storage for books, paper, files, stuff like that. My estimate would probably be maybe a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for a nice piece of furniture to take the place of that credenza. And then I don't know what the going rate is on the mini refrigerator. Four, five, six, seven bucks for a small, I'm not sure. They're certainly cheaper and much more reliable than what I remember with my college days, so if we bought one, I'm sure. Last so long, I'm gonna see you soon, so. I think.
The retro's coming back, they're gonna bring back shag carpet.
Not my home or office.
There were things living in the carpet when we got there, we're pretty sure.
They're supposed to have pets.
Don't talk about my son that way. Can I add a one, one footnote that's not directly budget related, that, that is, this next year, I've talked to, uh, Gabriel Little and Dr. Kristen, I think, about approaching you guys next year about how we can invest our money, as I'm getting my Series Seven, uh, broker's license, I'll be in a better position than I have been in the last seven years to provide the kind of financial advice, investment advice. And I think that as a county commissioner, historically, we've never looked beyond fifty-six months, nine months at most of investing. And I think we ought to look to at least a year, maybe two years. The Fed is gonna raise the rates probably this month by a quarter percent. And in the next two or three or four years, my next turn, booking opportunity as a commissioner and as treasurer, or even finance officers, we're all to us to work together on putting money out there longer term in nearly risk-free investment vehicles. So like CDs, we've done traditionally, but also treasury notes and treasury bills, which go out, uh, beyond a year, and also agencies. And I can talk to you more about that next year, but I just wanted to give you guys heads up, that maybe you all will have that frame of mind, like I'm trying to get myself and, and Kristen to look at a longer term on our investments, so. Any questions?
Well, um, we've just been asking everybody to try to get your employee evaluations done, so you only have Penny.
Yeah, I always get them done on time.
And we were just wanting them back by the fifteenth of December, and so, I mean, you have a plan to give her about this year, and so just include that, so that we have all that.
Exactly.
Move forward.
Did we already receive an email for the evaluations? Usually we receive one. Yeah, as soon as we get that, we just.
She has a form that normally sent out.
We'll have Debbie send that to you.
Should I go buy a refrigerator now, or wait? Is that it?
Wait.
Do we plan on investing in CDs over the end of the year, against this year?
No, I think we ought to just, in a holding pattern right now, all of our money is in our, uh, demand accounts, our checking accounts, on twenty-one. And I think we should stay that way, well, the central bank will come to us like they do annually and ask us to help them shrink to below ten billion, so that they can skip a huge amount of money in, in regulatory costs they incur by being a bank of larger than ten million. So I know the collector, and he, he pones up a rather large amount of money, uh, we have much less, at least still, apparently, or appreciated by central bank right now. And obviously, we make a little more, uh, we get a slightly higher yield out of it, it's a very short-term treasury, uh, notes. Then we do keep it in our, uh, you know, our two point five five percent, first fifteen million bucks that we get from it. And then the rest of that fifteen million or so, just cause the overnight rate, the repo rate, which is like about point, I think it's point two right now. So by going for those thirty or sixty pays into treasuries, we get a slightly better, uh, yield. And the bank has promised us in writing, if a yield, year the treasury's worth for some reason to drop, they would meet or exceed what we would get if we had kept it in our, uh, demand deposit. So, so, I answered your question. So we'll want to put three or four on these six, on the treasury.
But they have not approached you yet?
Haven't approached us yet, so, which is kind of odd, since it's already the center. Maybe we're just a tiny part of the. I think doesn't the collector put like forty-five million or something?
He has stated in the past, so if we decide not to do general, that money, he, I would like to knock down also the collector.
And not, not leave money to them.
So we just, we just decide to do it.
Well, if the bank doesn't call, I think we should just sit tight.
Okay.
And wait till next year, and have all five of us in the real smart, and we'll, uh, all be on the same page, so.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks, Penny.
Emily, morning.
Oh, no.
Part one fifty-one, and on page sixty-eight. Any revenue questions that concern you, or the auditor proposed versus maybe that's better.
The revenue is now here, so.
Okay, the first one I am, is the equipment service contract. We had last year fourteen thousand, well, approved for this year is fourteen thousand, and the auditor suggested twelve thousand six hundred. I agree that we could probably cut this down, but I think twelve thousand six hundred dollars, I think we should make it at least thirteen thousand, so there wouldn't be any issue with going over budget on this.
So here, here's the list of things that came up to the twelve six. So the filing system, that's over at Shepherd's, their micro machine maintenance agreement, and then, um, the leases for the copiers and the overfill of the copiers. So that averages of what?
That's an average, yeah, I'm like you said, I just wouldn't want there to be any issues with, I mean, I'm, I agree that we can cut the budget here. However, I just think that we should leave it at thirteen thousand and not go, not think it's a questionable area.
Okay, so that's a good list, we just think that maybe, maybe.
Okay. Meeting, travel and dues, I requested an increase of five hundred dollars on this, especially because, um, I'm, right now. I didn't go to judicial conference. go to judicial conference for this year. There was two of them I could go to. I didn't, I chose not to go to two of them, which would have, I didn't have any continuing education basically from 2015. I only have, if I would have, I'd know that I would definitely be over budget by $500. So clerks did go at the beginning of the year. I, however, was unable to, so that's why the budget is like, what now, 300 dollars less than what it's rated. So I'm asking for an increase for continuing education services.
And meeting travel and dues.
And then the mileage, I think I'm at like right now with the new bill that I'm gonna submit, I'm like $15 off. And again, if I was to find offices, I would be over budget on this. So I'm asking for an additional $50 on my budget. Just with offsite storage, that will take $300 per year. Then the next one is office supplies. And yes, over the last, well, I've been in charge of actually two budgets now. The first one, it was handed to me at a, what was it, 23,000. So my first year in office, I saved $7,000 for the county in regards to that budget. Then the following year, we marked it down to 2,000, I believe, for the actual budget, and we only spent 10,000 of that last year. Last year, we were going through e-filing, and we did a considerable amount of updates in regards to office equipment, but that was ended up being purchased, the majority of it by the state and by our office special funds. So we didn't actually focus on much more than the equipment that was needed to get the courthouse up to date on technology. However, I can tell you right now, on my budget for this year, I'm sitting at 976 dollars left in my budget for this year, at 16,000. So I'm asking that you do not cut that budget anymore. I need to have next year, well, I can even tell you right now, the only ice machine that's working in the courthouse, well, it doesn't even work right now, I have to have that fixed, that's probably going to be a $500 cost. I think they're gonna have the parts in sometime in the middle of the month, so it could go over to next year. I know that we haven't updated many chairs in our office for a number of years. I think you even have something on, well, from 1992. Sorry, inventory of office chairs. So again, I'm asking that you do not cut my budget on office supplies. That's it, that's all I have. I noticed on the printing and binding, we're also cutting that budget. I believe that we could go down $1,000 on that, and we should do that on the, I guess, there are a few. This year, we're sitting at 4,000. Next year, we can do a decrease in that by, do you have any questions?
Any capital requests?
Sure, I'm feeling good, thank you.
No microfilming?
Well, we've got a special fund now, with the state giving us $10 a case. We're holding on to that money, and then we'll be trying to keep up with microfilm using those funds.
Good.
What was the ice machine?
I suppose she had said it has about $500, I think, of labor.
For what ice machine, refrigerator? Do we have a full ice machine on it?
Is it under the counter?
It's under the counter, yeah. It's the only one in the courthouse. One in the jury room does not work.
Everybody uses it?
Everybody does, including when we have juries. No, it's not in the jury room. The one in the jury room does not work. It's in the break room. So that's the only, yeah.
Can we fix one in the jury room?
I don't think it has a line to it. Honestly, I don't know what's wrong with that. I don't think that there's a line to it. Yeah, we'll move it over. We used to have one, but we're gonna move it over. I know that there's a lot that could be done in regards to the jury room, but I think that's also in court services.
Are there questions?
Pretty easy to see. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bill.
Hopefully, this will be non painful.
What page, you say, 53?
Okay, as far as revenue, that is a transfer. You can look at that line. It's from public works pays, assessor pays, and EMS, computer services. It's all based on the maximum study. Those are separate funds. We retrieve the money from those funds into general funds to help with the IS department. And then from there, we get into his expenses. So if they have, did you have any problem with any of those line items?
Uh, no. I think everything was, you know, we've gone through everything, and I've gotten as many updates as I can on costs. The professional services are an ongoing thing. You know, I've kind of absorbed, I know I'm doing, you know, paying rich out of, for the recorder and that kind of stuff, so that, you know, I don't exactly know how to do it. So whatever the total we pay between all the departments that, you know, I guess with me, the recorder and myself, that would have to be covered. And we do have some associated professional services once in a while, but I don't know what our, this year's going to be, but I don't know if 18,000, I feel more comfortable with the 25, just because I don't know what it's going to be. It's, we're gonna be putting mail server in, so I could be spending a lot of time doing that and stuff, so there could be some, you know, like a little bit more expenses involved than just what we have this year. We had a very quiet year, I think, as far as going to use resources, but that would be one thing. I think everything else is pretty much kind of dry, communications and the internet, that's whatever our contracts with CenturyLink is. I mean, it's whatever the expenses, we don't add or take away anything from. Equipment service contracts, there's a lot of stuff involved with that. And a lot of that is CenturyLink, the phone system items. And the other thing is we're, our main servers are, have exceeded their three-year warranties, so we're keeping a year-to-year maintenance contract on the main. Obviously, City Plus is going to be the new website that isn't in place. We're picking up, or we have on here for the, the top is the, is the phone system. And we've been tuning and drawing on that. I don't know what the actual, I mean, we're, it's in the ballpark of 30,000 and some, something. But we are replacing all the routers next year because they all have reached end of life as of 2016. So we're, there, that's actually in the, kind of the capital request. We have those on there. Smart now, we have one switch that we own that's not part of the CenturyLink contract. That's down in there. Symatic antivirus, we have to renew that every year, and that's for, for doing, you know, on everybody's machine and email. The intrusion prevention module, we are actually out of service right now, and I have yet to hear a new price to renew that. So at this point, it's always November, and I don't have a price to renew it, but that's what I can do. Okay, our server backup agent, that's, those are specific things, we're doing tape backups. And next year, and I think I brought before you guys before, that we're going to a, we're trying to get approved a tapeless backup system, that everything's done electronically, so the tapes will go away. And those appliances actually encompass those pieces, but until that happens, we have to have coverage on that. That's critical that we have our mail server covered. So we have to, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but we just have to renew that until we get the other thing, excuse me, in place. City Plus is the website maintenance, the website site is supposed to go live on February. As far as I know, it's on track. Exchange certificate is a, is a three-year thing that people have to have to be able to connect to exchange from a variety of places. So we paid for that this year, so it's not due again until 2019. The next set of lines are all the extended maintenance for the more critical servers that we have that have gone past three years old. So we're not replacing the servers, we're just extending the maintenance on them. BSA maintenance, self-explanatory. CIC is, that is for the recorder. Is that a good number now? I knew that there was a different value. I think that's the latest one you gave.
That is, this is the latest one here.
Okay. The CGM and Envision are both health products. Also, we're extending the maintenance on their one remaining server out there. Two definite things are for Larry Vincent's collector software. And we're also extending the maintenance on his server as it's expired for three years old. And Intrinsicor is the assessor software, annual lease rental, whatever. It's, we don't own it, we pay an annual fee for it. So that's, that is that. So those are pretty much all kind of dry. There's no, no fluff in it. I mean, there's nothing really arbitrary. I just think it's critical that we keep the servers. If a server hard drive fails, you can replace it. That's not a problem. If the motherboard fails, which we did have one provision, I forgot, the thing is the recorder's box is like one year old and it failed. Those are non-replaceable by us. We have to have HP come in and do it. So if you don't have the maintenance, you're basically down $6,000 to replace it, so we don't really want to go to that deal. So we just feel either better, better bet for us.
What was the health where?
The health is the CGM, that's the new alt here, that's their electronic medical record.
Health department?
Yeah, and the Envision is the dedicated stuff that Mike Sapp and his crew, that's the environmental software.
So the DevNet, online maintenance and annual maintenance, I?
Those two pieces.
Larry doesn't pay for that?
No, I think, well, I know the agreement was, he paid for the software, we paid for the maintenance, I believe it was what, it was agreed.
That's a pretty big chopper.
Yeah, it is, all these are.
I mean, we're paying $25,000 in annual maintenance, and we had to buy the software, and assessor's paying $50,000 just an annual fee.
Yeah, and that goes on forever. That's, see, that was the disappointing part, that we didn't own it and just paid maintenance on it.
That does come out of that fund.
Because it's a subscription, it's not a maintenance.
Same way with EMS, since it comes out there, when there's a zero right here, it comes out of the budget. So I don't know why you, we pay that.
Were you able to get into that?
I was, but it was not hard.
I think I talked, maybe I think I talked Larry.
I did a new document, but he didn't tell me on the office or something, what I suggested.
Why didn't it come up like that? Stupid. Why didn't it flash that up?
Now you're trying to open it like 10 times. Patient.
Dale, where are we at on this, taking down the AS400?
Okay, I had a discussion with Phil Mercer two weeks ago. He assured me that he would contact Dave Sabbath about what we're doing. There is actually software, it is not production-ready at that point, and I have, and Dave Sabbath has yet to contact me. I said there was going to be a forthcoming letter if something didn't transpire, and obviously, that didn't scare anybody because I have not heard it. I keep preaching the end of the year, end of the year, and I don't know. Dave Sabbath has not, and he's the only one who knows. Nobody over there knows anything about any.
I think we should send a letter. Today's the first, I think we should send a letter. I'd say the 30th, it will be shut down.
No.
Yeah, if you're not ready, too bad.
When is our maintenance on the?
No, I agree. It's actually like the middle of the year. We renewed it like June to July.
We do have current maintenance on the 400 through, hopefully, the middle of next year. But once that, we don't, we have not budgeted it.
Yeah, it's not budgeted anymore. I mean, it's kind of a mid-year renewal thing, I think.
They've been told. They've been told.
Well, no, I want to get it done.
At the end of the year, it's, you know, I mean, if we don't.
I think they need to come up with, give them the letter, and they need to come up with their timeline. We've not seen one timeline.
I don't, I won't get a timeline. I mean, we've given them a timeline. We said the end of the year, we're shutting it down.
And there's no, the thing is, nobody, nobody's driving the, driving the car over there with what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, there's our software out there that we can get to the assessor, so, you know, if they can't get it done, we'll just, we'll do something.
But I'm just saying that the hard deadline would be June if we're not going to continue to pay maintenance on the 400. I mean, whether anybody wants it to or not, at that point, we're not going to continue to pay maintenance on it because we have not budgeted.
Yeah, yeah, there's no budget.
So, I mean, at that point, there's no support.
Yeah, there's no way it's 400 budget, any items here, so.
And we've got maintenance on it, but if something goes wrong with it, that's our cost, right? So it behooves us to shut it down, get rid of it. Maybe we'll get some of our maintenance money back, I don't know.
Well, we got money in the assessor fund that we could pay for the 400, you know, I don't want to do that. The box is too old to keep. I mean, it's 2006 or '07. It's going with bars. Yeah, yeah, and I told, I mean, the thing is, I told Phil, and he said, "Oh, yeah, I'll get a hold of it." And the thing is, Dave either does, he never responds to anybody. I think the only person he responds to is Alvin or something. I talked to him, I mean, when, I don't know, October or whatever, and he's, or August, he said, "Oh, yeah, October, I'll have it ready," you know, at least beta testing and stuff. The only person who's seen anything is Phil, and he said, "Well, this doesn't work, this doesn't work, this doesn't work, this."
December 1st. I think, I think the letter should say that December 31st, or whatever the day is, that we will shut the AS400 down, whether they're ready or not.
All right.
And if I have to go hit the switch, I'll hit it. Just show me where it is, Dale.
Yeah, we could do it.
We can have three switches and one that actually does it, so you don't know which one actually did.
Actually, we could just unplug the cable.
You know how they do the?
Take it out and shoot it.
How they do the electrocutions or whatever. You know, when we've actually pulled.
But you send Julie and have her take a picture of us.
Hey, Jeff, you could get your goggles.
Yeah, so my niece is a trick.
The other big part is Dale, but he's asked to get the computer services together for us for the capital. So he came up with a list here, and again, it's a separate tab on the same switch.
Their request.
Have you just got comfortable?
Basically, the top two items are replacing, there's still like 2,007, eight machines, eight machines over the assessor's office to get them all caught up. EMS, the art serve EDP appliances, that is the replacement backup solution. Those are actually appliance, a box that has all the internal stor- Those are actually appliance, a box that has all the internal storage, and it does, takes care of all the backups, so there is no, with no, there be any tapes involved with anything, so they're always online, always in backups. And the advantage is, is that we're gonna have one at each of the remote sites, and one at the courthouse, and we're going to be able to have two copies of the backup, so there's offsite storage for every backup, that a second copy is stored in another site, so we have the redundancy that is critical if we have a failure somewhere. They're not cheap unfortunately, but the one thing I did not put on here, and I talked to Debbie about this a little bit, I did not put one on for the sheriff's office. I know they fund their own stuff, so I have not gone to that and said, you need to buy this or whatever. I'm gonna try ours, if it works good, I'll recommend they do the same thing. Their problem is, we don't have a place to make a backup, a second copy for them. We have enough stories between our four sites to accommodate everything, but we don't have enough to really accommodate them on another place, so that's gotta be kind of developed, if that, that's a future, future goal. The Cisco router replacements, I just made one line item, there are four or five routers that have to be replaced, they're all in the red, well, there's, all the, all the remote sites have them, and there's like three or four downstairs, so it's a general wholesale, they're all not, are going into life at the same time, because they're all 28 XX models that they're retiring, they're all 29 something now. Microsoft Office, two years ago, I actually requested like a hundred license, I didn't buy them, I bought 50, and we've been really good until last part of the year, and I have gone over 50, so this 15 is to catch us up on the license, so we're still below what I requested a couple of years ago. We're, we're actually seven behind right now, where I've actually installed it on the machines, and I don't pay my license for it. Maintenance, hmm, small form factor piece, trying to think, breaks, well, he's, he's got a mobile DC, that's true, and he's great with like the DC. Public administrator, getting a new one for Merrell, and I think that's actually a herbal laser printer. Public health, that's, well, that's another one we need, used to have. They got nine DCs that need to be replaced out there, and they've got, actually, they have monitors dying quite frequently, it seems like the gateways, the 2004 gateways are all turning off at, with very frequency. Public orders out there, it's been a treasurer, is replacing Denny's and Eric's DCs. And that's it, with the exception, this is just a bring it to your attention thing. CenturyLink is offering this service, and it's actually a service that they're contracting with McAfee, who is a security provider, but it's a cloud-based, meaning it's not onsite, but it's for email, and what it does is all of our, we subscribe by user, so we have, my last count, there's over 400 email users in the county. But you, each user has a license that all their email first goes to the cloud. It scans all the emails, it finds malware, it finds all this spam, you know, the spam we've been getting so much of, we have a spam filter, it doesn't work very well, so this is, would add another layer of spam filtering. And an optional piece of this is it provides encrypted email, so if, the real places would be affected would be health, where they had to send health information via email, and it has to be encrypted to do that, but it allows them to encrypt the email that they have, the people they send to, would it, would be able to access that email and keep it encrypted and protected, and you buy that per user, so I don't know what number that would be, probably be less than 10 users on that. The price I got from that is like, it's $18 per user per year, so, but this service, if we go straight to McAfee, it is $23.71 per user per year. And unfortunately, when you start totaling that all up, that's a lot of money, but it's like $8,000, well, maybe $9,000 a year. But the other, oh, the other thing it does do is, since all the email goes to that server in the cloud, if anything ever happens to our email, they hold it all, so all of our email is still accessible through them, there's a secure way to log on via the web and see all the email, and even if we're down and out, our email would still go to them. And then when we're back up, then obviously we come back to our email server. But it's, I didn't put it on the budget, it's, it's something that gets kind of come up later, but with the amount of spam and stuff that we're getting, it's, it's just a, it's a mounting problem, and right now, I don't have a real solution for it. Our package...
That's probably too bad.
Yeah, but...
Did you say $21 per user per month?
Per year.
Per year.
Yeah, it's $2.20 something cents a month. So the deal is, we have to administer it, I mean, you have to add and subtract users and all that kind of stuff, but you have an administrator here that controls who, you know, what emails are covered and stuff like that. But I think it's a pretty good, I, I'm not a real cloud person, but to me, this, this the fact that it, you know, gives us the opportunity for the encrypted email for the people that need it, they, they were really asking for it this year, and at that point, I didn't really have a solution for them, but this is one, and cutting down the spam and having the backup, if we should somehow fail, then the email is still there and accessible. So... Do we have somebody backing us up, like Cap Region, like Huber, Huber Associates? No, we do, I mean, we do a tape backup, we back up Friday night. Two packs, so we've got like a... Yeah, we, we back up ours Monday through Friday night, every night, and then to take, we, I take Friday tape offsite, but it's, it's backed up every night. But this would be like, if the server, you know, what is the situation where the server totally fails, then we can't have email till tomorrow, or the next day, whatever, you know, you get the hardware in and rebuild it and that kind of stuff. So I don't anticipate a long outage anytime, but that, this is just, we would still have it in the event that we did go back, so...
Encrypted emails would be nice. I do have several vendors that I deal with back and forth through the retirement.
Oh yeah, I was gonna say HR stuff, yeah, all your, all your payroll.
And I use their encrypted email, so I have to wait until they have sent me one before I can send that one to you.
But anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward, you know, I didn't put it on the original budget, because I do have a pretty hefty budget with all the backup stuff and everything, but I would like to maybe later in the year, see how, how the money is running and possibly have that on a contingency list, if we, if we free up some funds that we could start pursuing it. But I just think it's a good idea. I've been trying to get a little bit more, I know CenturyLink offers it, but they're obviously adding a markup on it to, they're, they're three bucks a month versus $2.23, so it's, you know, that's 25% markup on, just for them, so if we just go straight to McAfee and do it, they would, they would save us money and do the same exact thing, so... But anyway, that's really all I have. Anybody have any more questions, or?
No, I don't think, but this time.
Okay. But anyway, like I said, I'd like to keep that as a contingency thing somewhere, you know, in our pocket, to say that, I don't want to commit to it, but if we have some, you know, some money that's available, that maybe we can look into it, and I think we could do it at any time, you know, in the future, so it doesn't have to be first of the year, it could be any, any part of the year, as far as I know.
So 200,000 in computerization is where all of that newer stuff comes from, or, are right?
I think it's 250, I think they increased it a little bit, and give us, again, a cushion.
Yeah, there's, the thing with the computerization fund is that anybody who has failures and stuff that we have to go buy has come, come out of the fund, because I don't have any excess really building on it, so...
Yeah, so I, I put a cushion in there also, in case there are things that come up very many years that are unexpected.
And they're all, they're always are.
So I think his list was only like 141, so we put 250 in there.
That cash forward moving forward, I guess that's kind of a moving target.
Yes, that, that one's probably moving the most, I mean...